...and ready to go. And we have to remember where we ended and where we're starting, so we were, I believe, right around number seven of Tim Ladish's proposed alternative four. Somehow...
We're past seven.
I lost it. That's Alice.
Oh, this is yours. Can you grab mine?
No, I grabbed hers. There you go.
You got mine?
I guess. I was here.
No, because my notes aren't on this.
Well, maybe I...
Here. We'll give you that one. Do you forgive us for one second?
It had secret notes. Not mine. Maybe it's in my briefcase.
Well, people are sorting out their papers. I thought of something during lunch, and that, and I'm assured by county counsel this can be drafted around, is that, and Peter, you'd be directly involved in this, we're talking about having the people who have been approved and those who have yet to be approved be permitted to transfer or conduct business, et cetera. I think it's very important that we have the permit process continue so we vet out the people that should not be approved.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that you don't see any problem with doing that?
No.
I mean, even if this were, if the urgency ordinance were to be repealed next week...
We can incorporate by reference or write in the same exact terms.
Great. Okay.
Well, then, the terms of the urgent ordinance under which all of those applications are pending give them time to continue it and provides us time to...
But if the urgency ordinance is replaced as a technical matter, we want to incorporate by reference in the new version that language. Because technically, the urgency ordinance is going to disappear and be replaced by those.
I understand. Okay. Good.
All right. So, thank you for the clarity. I am going to, I kind of pick up where we left off. And I believe Commissioner Wooster, you were in the process of having a discussion at that end of the table on number seven, and we deleted it. And then you said you had some items you wanted to go over now, right?
Well, we started to go over mitigation measure 3.5-3, but I don't think we finished it.
Right. So, we'll let you pick up from there.
That's the water monitoring, which has written permits a continuous decline of water levels for five consecutive years before anything happens, which I had a problem One thing I think that should be made clear here that is not completely clear is that this monitoring has to happen every year, not just for five years, but as long as the operation's continuing. So, it should say these tests shall be completed monthly during the months of August, September, and October of each year, et cetera.
I think that makes sense.
And then with respect to the last sentence that gave me trouble, I think if you had a provision that said if you've got a decline in water levels for a period of two consecutive years, then you're going to have to demonstrate a reduction in water usage by 50 percent or go to an alternative source.
Yeah. I think, I think the reduction of water use of your onsite water by 50 percent until the tests indicate what, either leveling off or improvement?
Well, as it provides now, until it's recovered to within 10 percent of the pre-drawdown levels.
Okay. So, just keep looking over to the drafters. I don't have a problem with that.
Do you have another copy of the alternative four you wrote?
I have no copy of mine.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wooster. I didn't quite hear all of that last part. What did you say about 50 percent?
We're going over E R.
If you, if you had a decline for a period of two consecutive years in a sourced water supply well, then you would have to demonstrate a reduction in use from that well of 50 percent.
Even if the reduction of water supply is 1 percent or 5 percent?
Yeah. If you've got a continuous decline, it's, you've got a problem.
Well, if it's, if it's a small amount, a very, a very small amount. Reduce the usage by 50 percent.
I think that's, that's a, that's a good point.
I mean, I agree with the basic concept.
Okay. Commissioner Bocelli, could you please pull the mic in so that we can hear you, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I agree with the basic concept. I'm just not sure about the numbers.
I think what we have here is that CCWD said three years wasn't enough to see what exactly was going on, whether there was really going to be a long-term reduction. But I agree with Commissioner Wooster that five years is a long time to sit around tapping your toes to see if something is going wrong. And if you have a shorter period, shorter period of drop, two consecutive years, but not then cut off all the water, which, which is what Commissioner Wooster is suggesting. I think, I think having a, I think if two consecutive years for a total decline of at least X percent makes some sense to me. What's, what's the X percent?
Well, he's got a 10 percent in this, in this paragraph. Perhaps that's the answer. If, if the decline is at least 10 percent or in excess of 10 percent, then...
Well, that's true.
Reduce the usage by 50 percent or something.
I think that makes sense.
That, that makes a whole lot of sense. You really do.
Okay. Clarity?
Yeah.
What are you all agreeing on? Because I was talking with Julie.
We seem to be agreeing. Well, it's, this, Commissioner Wooster, just go ahead. What are we agreeing on?
Am I supposed to say what we agreed on?
Yes, please. I wasn't paying attention. I apologize.
If a continuous decline of water levels is observed for a period of two consecutive years in a sourced water supply well amounting to 10 percent or more for the two years, then the applicant must demonstrate a reduction in water usage of 50 percent until well water levels are recovered to within 10 percent of their pre-drawdown levels.
And we'd say usage of well water.
Yes.
Okay.
And I thought I heard that last 10 percent was going to be increased to 50 percent.
That's what I wrote.
No. You have to, you have to reduce your usage by 50 percent until you've recovered to 10 percent of the pre-drawn down levels.
And is everybody in agreement with the way that that was stated?
Yes, ma'am.
I am.
And this is for, across the board.
Across the board. Okay.
It's their own will.
Okay. So...
And that can be full of...
So, this is a proposed modification to the mitigation measure.
Yeah.
Which I believe is acceptable. It is increasing the level of mitigation. So, therefore, is, does not require recirculation or any additional procedural requirements under CEQA. So, that, it's acceptable.
Okay. And that could be put in the appropriate place under number eight, assuming we're going to approve of more...
This would be included in the overall recommendation of the commission of the alternative.
Yeah. Okay. So, we move on to eight?
I'm in it. I think Mr., Commissioner Wooster had some bullet points he wanted to go down, and you, I don't think we're at it yet. Let's go one through seven and make sure each commissioner is in total agreement and doesn't have any other bullet points that they would have wanted added and inserted during those times.
Well, okay. These don't really pertain to numbers one through seven, so they could come at any time, but I'm happy to do them now. One, I think we already mentioned that the maximum canopy size should be capped at 22,000 square feet.
Okay. We all agreed on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Another one was a concept that I believe Commissioner Bocelli alluded to. And I think that this ordinance should provide that the permissions to grow under this alternative will expire four years after the effective date of enactment, and the provisions of the draft ban ordinance would then apply. And my reasons for that are this. This is, this is an experiment, and nobody really knows how it's going to turn out. And given the hints, one might even call them threats, of litigation over this, I would prefer to avoid handing people an argument that they had a vested right under this ordinance to continue growing for who knows how long, even if the county later wished to institute a ban because it wasn't working out. We have already seen variations of that argument put before the planning commission in connection with appeals from denials of registration. And in addition, this, if things go great and this all works out, the board could always extend the provisions of this draft ordinance if it wanted to. The four-year period also correlates with what the sheriff told us would be required to get a handle on this. And of course, it provides revenues during that period. So, that would be my suggestion on that score.
I'd want to make sure I get it right. Four years from when it was originally put into force or four years from when this goes?
Karen, can you pull the mic forward, please? I don't know why I'm having a hard time. Are you guys hearing okay?
No.
Okay. Okay. Four years from the original ordinance? Is that what you're saying?
Four years from the date that this ordinance that we're just discussing now comes into effect.
Okay.
Is there a way of drafting, if we don't have a set four-year period, is there a way of drafting the ordinance so that we don't have a vested rights argument if we want to repeal it?
I would feel, if we have to, I'd rather have time to research that one more. I do think that with Commissioner Wooster would make it much clearer. I don't, I would have wanted time to research how to do it without investment if we don't.
My concern is, I mean, I see your point, and I think it's, it's a good one. But I, also, what we're asking people to do is, a lot of people, to sell their current property and restore it, and, you know, this is assuming that they want to stay around, move to another property and develop it, which is going to take at least two years, possibly, possibly take two years with all the permits and everything else. I'm afraid this might end up being a poison pill, that these people would just move away. And we've, we're already restricting it to the people who have done everything right and have received their permas. I, I would think that if the commission's going to do something like this and still preserve the right to cut this off if it isn't working, I'd like to see a period of at least six years. I think that might make it economically feasible for these people to do everything they would need to do in order to comply with this ordinance.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm in the middle here. Five.
We're waiting to hear from you.
Five years sounds okay to me.
Yeah, it's awful. I mean, we're, you know, I joke too, but we're playing with people's fates.
No, and I apologize for the jocularity. You're right. Serious stuff.
And now they all look at me.
I haven't heard from Commissioner Sisk. I'd like to wait.
Oh, I'm good with four years. Or less. Okay. The sheriff did state it would take four years to clean up the illegal activity going on in the county. And I think, I don't know what I think. I think that, that we're spending a lot of time on crafting an alternative that would be pretty restrictive, extremely restrictive, and, and cutting out a ton of zones. And if the 400 or so, which will probably be less by the time we get there, considering all the appeals that we get, come through, I think that number is going to be smaller. And I think to, I don't know, put people through the hoops, if it's a serious alternative that's being looked at, we have a ban, and then we have an alternative. I'm not sure I want to put a ban to the end of it after making them jump through hoops and move out of the areas that were really heartbreaking for me and of concern. I mean, if, if the whole purpose of this alternative is to eventually end up in a ban, then the four years is, is kind of the number that the sheriff went with. I'm just not so sure that it's the right thing to do right now with...
Well, he said it'd take about four years to get a handle on the illegal grows. You know, he certainly wasn't speaking to...
I know.
The legal grows.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess what we need to do is start a poll, and yeses on four years and nos on, so we have two fours, right?
I have a five.
You have a five.
Well, I have a no on four.
Okay, a no on four. You guys are pinning this on me.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think since the agreement, I mean, I probably wouldn't have been in agreement if it was still in residential rule, residential agriculture, and the unclassified had not been addressed. But since it's been addressed and it's going to be moved completely out of the residential areas, I'm not comfortable with doing this ban at this point, as far as doing the four year ban. I would have been very comfortable with it if, if the zonings weren't considered and passed through. But I think if we're going to move them out of where the problems are, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable with doing that now. I mean, I, I have a hard time saying to somebody, hey, go buy a piece of land, move your registration, and it's going to be costly for them to do that, and then to say, it'll take you a year to at least accomplish the move, and then three years from now, you're going to be done. Now, granted, the supervisors would have the option, whoever the supervisors are, of extending if, if the behavior improved, the county looked good, the major C and the state tax dollars were coming in, and it was working out for the county. And then again, that brings up a whole nother issue. What if things don't look better in four years?
I do want to point out that even with a vested right, you would be allowed to do a future ordinance and amortize existing uses to have them dwindle out. So, a vested property right doesn't necessarily mean forever you could ban later and, and then amortize existing grandfather and not allow expansion of existing uses. Just another option to throw on the table.
I think that would be much fairer than putting a set time limit on it.
Say that again.
But if you...
I'm sorry. I can't hear them either. The...
Pull the mic forward, please.
Are these adjustable?
Yeah. You ought to put your mics to the side. They're all talking to the middle.
Okay.
So, you gotta just record all towards the middle, and that way what you're talking to will get, and you're talking to the other.
Well, okay. Sorry.
If you just turn the mic behind this, I think that...
Okay.
Put the mic over it closer, you're wearing your ankle here.
Like this? Okay.
No.
Put it in your mouth.
Put the mic over to where you're...
That's it. Talk.
Okay.
Shall we vote on that?
Okay. I can, I can hear myself in the mic now. So, what I was saying is if the, if it wasn't working out, just this is another option. There's nothing illegal about the options you're discussing. The, if you did not have a sunset date and it wasn't working for the county later on, the county could always pass an ordinance banning cultivation, banning any of these commercial activities, and then the existing permitted activities could be put onto an amortization schedule over a period of years, which, again, is, you know, it's one of the options you have with the dispensaries now. So, even a vested property right is not necessarily a permanent property right. I'm just stating that as another option so that you know it's on the table.
Okay. So, Commissioner Wooster, since you made the original proposal, do you want to stand on your four sunset date, or do you want to even consider anything that Julie just said?
I would be more comfortable with my original proposal, but I, I think a five-year period would be equally reasonable.
Okay.
I do want to avoid the vested rights argument, and I do want to avoid arguments down the road about what the amortization's going to be.
Okay.
If you don't have a sunset, well, I just don't think we need that. And if this thing is working out just great, the board will certainly extend it.
Okay.
But I want, I want the burden to be there and avoid any arguments like we've seen before the commission that says, you told me I could do it, so I get to keep doing it.
Right. Okay. So, Commissioner Sisk, would you be willing to go to the five years?
I don't want to go to five years. But I'll compromise and go to five years.
Okay.
If you're going to like my follow suit, yes.
I said I would compromise and do the five years. And Commissioner Bocelli said five. You say no?
I'd prefer six, but I'm not going to say no because it's inconsequential.
I would go with the five, just because I fear for the vested right as well. So, that's four for the five years, the sunset date. And then if the situation has worked itself out, the supervisors at that point in time could reassess, or it's automatically phasing out. Okay.
Keep going?
Yep.
There's a couple of other things that, that came up in what was called Option Five or Alternative Five by the CPC. And they were, each registrant only gets one grow. In other words, you can't be a registrant and have more than one grow. And each property owner only gets one grow. I'm not, I'm not really pushing those, but I think they are options that we ought to consider. Because I don't know that anybody needs to be, you know, operating five or six of these 22,000 square foot grows.
One thing that we've done, at least for the next five years, or possibly for the next five years, is we are going to have the best darn group of growers that have ever started out because they've already been vetted. And I, if a current, I mean, right now, a grower can have how many permits?
Five, by state law.
And is state law required?
It's not required. The state says they can apply for five licenses, correct?
No, I meant within the urgency ordinance.
Of urgency, there is no limitation.
There's no limitation.
I'm not aware of a maximum state licensure application. They, under the MAU CURSA, they can have, there's, there are specific rules about what types of license. You can have more than one license now per individual, but it's still subject to local regulation. So...
I thought it was five under the state. Does anybody?
No.
How many licenses can one have? And only one person?
You can have one.
Yeah.
With one type.
Yeah. So, you could, no, no. You can have, they changed it. Under MAU CURSA, it used to be that if you were, get a cultivation license, you couldn't also have another type of license elsewhere. They have it where you cannot have more than a single licensed activity per premises. So, if you had a building, you can't do, unless you, and I'm not, forget microbusiness license for now. It's a general rule, you couldn't have a dispensary and a cultivation site in the same building, or manufacturing and growing in the same building, because that would, as long as it's the same premises. That's under MAU CURSA. However, the same person could have two different premises and two different licenses, and they can still, a single grower or a cultivator could also be a manufacturer, could also be something else, as long as they successfully got the other state license. So, that changed with MAU CURSA. It used to be that a person who got a manufacturer license or a business that got a manufacturer license couldn't also get like a cultivation license.
You're a state... You are a state. It's the real... Well... Public interest or your target or tax by limiting the number of licenses you want to get to.
Okay. One minute.
Bottom line is, you, the county can do, regardless of what the state allows.
This is what...
The county can choose to limit or even ban commercial uses. So, if the, if the county wants to limit a grower to not having a second cultivation, licensed cultivation site on the same site, it can do that. The state has expanded the co-licensing provisions under MAU CURSA from what it was before.
My understanding of what Commissioner Wooster was saying was that he would have it that no, no single primitie could have more than one grow. Is that what I'm...
That's, that's the idea I'm throwing out.
And why, why is that?
Well, I don't, I just don't know that we have to have huge agricultural operations held by people in little, little segments.
Well, don't we have that...
If we're talking about, if we're talking about protecting families that are trying to make a living, 22,000 square feet ought to be enough.
But don't we have in other business activities...
Okay. Come on, you guys. Please keep, don't interrupt.
In other business activities, I'm not, I'm trying to keep this from being an agricultural activity. So, other, other business activities outdoors, we have, I would think we have families that control many different parcels and are responsible for the stewardship of those parcels. And if we're talking about in the wine industry, I imagine there are licenses involved. I'm just, I really think that, that we reach a point where this is not, you're not necessarily a, a bad person if you're dealing in cannabis. And I, I think we're getting so that we're, we, and I'm not saying that that's what you're saying. I'm sorry if I implied that. I just don't think we should be so restrictive in this area if we're not so restrictive in other areas, particularly when we've already, as the chair said, made this such a restrictive alternative.
If we're talking about maintaining the existing registrants, then I don't think this limitation applies or should apply.
Why don't...
I mean, there probably are already some that have multiple grows. Not that I think that's a good idea, but we're retaining that as this alternative.
I think, I think you're on to something here again, that we've got, that for what we've, it's consistent with their approach we've done so far, that licenses would be limited to the number of licenses that they currently hold, that they can't apply for, for more.
So, if I could just read into the record, SB 94. It says, except for as provided in subdivision B, a person may apply for and be issued more than one license under this division, provided the licensed premises are separate and distinct. And the definitions of premises... And the definitions of premises means the designated structure or structures and land specified in the application that is owned, leased, or otherwise held under the control of the applicant, or license lea where the commercial cannabis activity will be or is conducted. The premises shall be contiguous area and shall only be occupied by one licensee.
So premises is not limited by parcel size. You could have multiple premises theoretically on a single parcel.
Shall we speak into the mic, please?
And you can have, one person can indeed, according to this, have more than one state license.
I'd suggest that we just, we keep it so that within our county law, a person is permitted to retain the number of licenses that person has now, no increase, and state law applies, however state law applies.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to the fact that we are listening to Commissioner Wooster's thoughts and processes right now, and I would like to pull his idea across the board. So, if you could state once again how you would like it to read, and then let us...
Well, I threw it out for discussion.
Right, we're discussing.
I didn't sponsor it.
You didn't sponsor it?
And I think Commissioners Bocelli and Lattish have convinced me that it's not necessary.
Okay. So...
That's democracy.
Okay, so what would be your next bullet item?
The rest will come up in connection with eight through eleven of Mr. Lattish's.
So, Commissioner Sisk, did you have any items that you want to add, or delete, or didn't like, or do like, one through seven?
No, for now, one through seven is okay.
Okay. Commissioner Bocelli?
I'm fine.
Okay, and we know you're fine.
I'm always fine.
Okay, so, we are going to move on to number eight, which is, "All mitigation measures listed for the project in the final EIR and all environmentally protected provisions of the 2016 proposed ordinance shall be applicable to the Alternative Four, except to the extent they are inconsistent with the terms of Alternative Four." And except, wow.
And except, and then we go...
And what?
Well, then except what I set forth below, A, B, et cetera.
Okay.
These are changes to individual mitigation measures, just as the Commissioner Wooster changed, suggested, and we agreed to, has changed to 3.5, page three, which ought to just be added to this list.
Okay, so he has 3.13 shall be applicable in the additional requirement that artificial lighting trespass into the night sky and shall be strictly limited by standards to be set by the county.
My concern there is just that this is one of, being from a rural area, the night sky is one of the reasons we're there. To the extent there can be prevention of the bleeding of particularly the hoop houses, the light into the night sky, I think we need to limit it in a reasonable fashion. And I wasn't writing in all the details here.
Okay, so without writing in all the details, he's got A as night sky lighting, B was he wants eight-foot fencing reduced to six-foot fencing, and C was, shall be amended so that the proposed ordinance text would be revised to read, "Except in emergency conditions as strictly defined by the county, refrain from using generators that are powered by gasoline, diesel, or other fossil fuels to assist in the cultivation and harvesting of cannabis operational activities. Also under mitigation measures 3.2-2, for Alternative Four, add the following: Except when alternative water sources are required under mitigation measures 3.5-3, no fossil-fueled vehicles shall be used to transport water to properties with cannabis cultivation operations."
And then there are more on the next page, but that's all I have to swallow right now.
Okay, so let's just start with the night sky and lighting trespassing, and you have left those standards to be set by the county. The county does not have currently a night sky ordinance. And in the new general plan that we are, the draft that we were looking at, night sky was a big conversation that we had, talked about, but an ordinance needs to be created via the county, and that has not yet been done. So, when you're telling staff that you want to see artificial lighting in the night sky protected, we don't have an ordinance in which to gauge that with. So, I'm not sure what language you would, you're just saying tell the county staff figure it out? Is that what we're doing?
Which is what the county staff suggested I do, is for her, set policies.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm open to discussion from the county staff.
I think first, let me poll the commissioners and see if everybody is in agreement that we need to address the lighting.
To that extent, yes.
Okay. Yes, yes, and Commissioner Wooster?
Has everyone looked at page...
We can address it. I'm not sure how we're going to do this, though.
I, I wonder...
Does everyone have page three dash four of the final EIR that has the revised mitigation measure 3.1-3 lighting standards in front of them?
Yeah.
It reads, "All lighting provided in conjunction with facility security or cultivation activities shall be installed, directed down and away from nearby property lines, and shielded to confine all direct rays of light within the boundaries of such facilities."
I didn't read that as covering the hoop house glow. I mean, you have lights directed down, they're directed eight feet down, maybe, on the ground that reflects it back up?
So then I have a question as to the language of your proposal here. You're not suggesting that we adopt a lighting ordinance, but sometime between now and final adoption of this ordinance, should it be adopted, we actually come up with specific standards to address that?
If possible.
Okay.
I mean, this is just, this is one of the major concerns about cannabis grows in the county, and it's something that has changed the life of a lot of people in ways that they, I mean, it's like odor. It's there. And I'm hoping we can do something about it now. If you want to put in language of, shall we if possible, or something like that at this, for now, that's fine. It's, one concern I have is that we don't want to get locked in as new, we know that new inventions are going to come out, and that hoop houses are going to be able to probably restrict their odor very effectively. And I'm hoping that the light would be something that is also something that can be...
Well, it could be something as simple as stating that hoop houses will be covered with opaque material to prevent light trespass outside the hoop house at night.
If that's feasible, that's, if we can leave it, if we can leave it a little loosey-goosey now, and you can get input as to what's possible...
This whole thing's loosey-goosey.
That would be fine. Well, I'm afraid of putting, I mean, tarps would do the job beautifully, but during the day, they need that light for the grow.
And they pull them off.
Yeah, I mean, that's wonderful.
If we're removing it completely from residential neighborhoods?
When I'm driving around...
I know, I heard the General Dollar Store, I remember.
No, I'm not saying that.
Well, it's the same thing. You didn't want commercial districts having that, so it would be the same no matter what zone it was in. Right?
I'm talking about driving around in the area in which I live, and seeing hillsides glowing as if it were hollyween, if it were orange.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to give you that, and you've given direction. Is everybody good with that?
I'm first, I'm not sure what Tim is saying. Are you agreeing with this sentence in 3.5-3, and you want to expand it?
And expand it, yeah.
All right, okay. I, I wonder how you're going to do it, because it, isn't the hoop house designed to allow light to go through it?
Oh yeah, during, during the day.
So how are you going to get light to go through during the day, not out at night?
Tarps is a possible thing.
All right.
Okay, so, hold on, guys. Okay, so is everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay, how about going from an eight-foot tall fence to a six-foot tall fence? What is the purpose of that?
The only purpose of that is that for those, for those owners who have put in a six-foot tall fence for the urgency ordinance, I don't want to see them have to pull everything out, put in an eight-foot fence. If you want to phrase it that way so that any new fencing will be eight-foot, that's...
So you want eight-foot, not six-foot? Because the way that this reads, what do you want?
I'm happy with six-foot.
The eight-foot tall fencing requirement of Section 17.95...
Would be reduced.
Oh, I see, okay. You're reducing it to six feet?
Yeah. I don't know what the point was. I mean, at one point, somebody decided eight feet was more than what was needed, and they changed it to six feet for the urgency ordinance.
I don't remember that change. Can you elaborate on that?
So, the original ordinance as proposed back in February of 2016 called out for an eight-foot tall fence. During the debate on the urgency ordinance, it was reduced to six feet, partially because anything, I believe, over six feet requires a building permit, and there are, you know, requirements for higher fencing. I don't know, I don't recall the full reason, but I think everyone agreed that six-foot was sufficient to deter trespassers. I won't say prevent it because it...
And is it, is the code currently, or the urgency ordinance currently six feet?
Yes.
So I don't, okay. All right.
So that's the reason.
Does anybody have an objection to that?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Mitigation measure 3.2.2, "Shall be amended so that the proposed ordinance text would be revised to read, 'Except in emergency conditions, the county refrain from using generators that are powered by gasoline, diesel, or other fossil fuels to assist in the cultivation of harvesting of cannabis.'"
If I could jump in here for a minute, two issues associated with this. One is the noise of generators.
I just wanted to do, I wanted a full disclosure as to what I'm doing here, is that I am eliminating the requirement that all off-road vehicles and trimmers and chainsaws and everything else need to be powered by something other than gasoline, diesel, or other fossil fuels. And I'm doing that because the reduction that we will have under Alternative Four is going to bring us the O-N-O-X, I guess it was, requirements that were the reason for the ban on use of fossil fuels and those other equipment, no longer exists because we dropped below the level that's stated in the EIR or something that's...
Well, that was just what I was going to point out, is that mitigation measure for reduction of greenhouse gases would be unnecessary under the alternatives that reduce the number of potential cultivation sites. So by eliminating RR and RA, it would reduce the threshold for requiring that measure. So then the only other issue associated with generators would be as far as, you know, any noise concerns you might have.
Yeah. And that is one of the sticking issues in the cannabis. And I, some of the growers that I have talked to would not have an objection to this as a part of a compromise. We have, it's built in that there would be emergency conditions that could be provided for by the county, you know, when there's a loss of power that's going to go on for six days or something of this sort. So, that's why I kept the generators in, because of the noise. And with the provision for emergency conditions.
Well, I think, since we moved it out of residential neighborhoods, we have a noise ordinance in the county, and where we measure decibels, and we've done it for the Verizon cell towers and everybody else. So, and especially if they're on manufactured industrial zoned property, and it's kind of like it's expected to be there, I'm not supportive of that.
How about, how about putting in the strict limitations of, in a soundproof structure and et cetera?
So that they have gases that explode buildings and start fires?
No, they would be added. Look, I don't know, I don't know what it is in Arnold, but it, you know, this is a problem. The generator noise is a problem.
But we're taking it out of the residential neighborhoods.
So you have somebody next door that is indeed 200 feet away, or whatever, who has a residence on something that's, you know, unclassified property.
Okay.
You know, I think, I think we ought to at least have them acoustically insulated.
If they comply with the noise ordinance in our county, is that acceptable to you? Because it does go through all the acoustics and the decibels and everything else. So if you are running at some amazing amount of decibels, you're going to be tagged anyway. I mean, I don't know, is that acceptable to you?
Is there something in the noise ordinance about generators? I know I've read...
It sounds, and we did apply it when it came to the Verizon cell towers. Right?
Any noise generating facility, equipment, vehicle is subject to the noise ordinance.
And in the new draft plan, we actually lowered those decibels.
Doesn't the emergency ordinance contain a specific provision about housing the generators?
I thought so. Yes, it does.
I would like to keep, transfer that to the new ordinance.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I think that makes sense. I mean, I don't know how you have a generator that's not powered by gasoline, diesel, or another fossil fuel.
Exactly.
Well, that's the problem I have in here.
Yes. No, that's...
How about steam?
Pedals, pedals. You sit out there and pedal.
I, I'm happy if we, if we transfer the provision that is in the urgency ordinance, which hasn't been followed by many people, but we're going to have such great people out there, they will follow this one.
I mean, I guess if I lived next door to one of those generators, I'd be right there with you. I don't understand, and I have a generator that runs when the power goes out, so...
Yeah. Okay.
I think the other thing to consider here is that under the urgency ordinance, cultivation is allowed on property that does not have a residence. This ordinance, or, well, I guess you haven't really addressed that. The proposed ordinance that the original EIR was based on, or the EIR was originally based on, was, requires a, or required a residence to be on the property. And so there's already going to be some power supply there. Now, it could be a generator if it's a very remote piece of property that's powering the household, but more than likely, they're going to be hooked up to the grid in some way. So the likelihood of a lot of generators are probably going to be reduced substantially, although on the other hand, the flip side would be more remote parcels, more expensive to connect. So I don't know what the result of that would be.
Well, I don't think anybody's going to use a generator if they can hook into the PG&E power. And so they're only going to use a generator if they have to. Like if their grow site is on a parcel, it has a residence, but it's a quarter of a mile away from the power. And so I would just go with, we have any emergency ordinance, leave it at that. And I do agree with getting rid of the rest of this. You can't use your ATV business. But I do have a question about the last sentence. It says, "Except when alternative water sources are required under mitigation measure 3.5-3, no fossil-fueled vehicle shall be used to transport water to properties with cannabis cultivation operations." Now, I don't know how you're going to transfer water without using a fossil-fueled vehicle. We don't have horses and buggies anymore. So, it seems to me that this is basically ruling out an operation that's dependent upon hauled water.
Yeah, it, my, my understanding is from, from the draft EIR, page 3.5-20, this is down in footnote five. It says cannabis operations would be required to obtain and disclose a legal water supply source under the proposed ordinance. Now, I assumed that that meant onsite legal water source, not water trucks.
When we crafted that language, I think that was the intent, but as we've discovered, there are other potential legal sources of water. You can contract with someone to haul water onto your site. That would be a legal source of water, as long as the source of that water that the delivery service is using it properly. And there's, we've discovered through our discussions with the state that depending on where the water is taken from and where it's used, that could be in conflict with state law, you know, different water rules under water law.
Well, I have an opinion on that.
So, if it is the intent... So if it is the intent that they're either connected to a public system, or they're utilizing a well onsite, then we should state that.
Mm-hmm. I, I agree. And that's what I think we should have. Again, speaking for rural Calaveras County people, water trucks are a big deal on this thing. I mean, we've had...
A lot of complaints, and then the appeals that has been talked about over and over again. It has rudded our roads, it has destroyed our roads. That is a lot of weight and a lot of trucking on our roads.
And it's loud.
And I do not think, if you do not have a water source, that is going to be one of my big hits in this alternative, you must have a well or access to water. I do not believe hauling water in, I mean, that's like, hey, I own a restaurant, I think I'll have the water truck haul my water in every day. That's not how businesses run. You have infrastructure on your business, and I believe that water is a part of that.
So with my assumption that it, that there was a legal onsite source of water, the sentence I'm putting in here, I think, makes sense, but we have, as Peter says, I think we need to clarify that that's what we're relying upon. So you have the legal onsite source of water. If it's a well and everything stays just fine, that's great. But if it starts dropping, then we have the standard that you pointed out. And it's only when that standard, when that trigger has happened, that they could use water trucks. And now, the reason I said fossil-fueled water vehicles is, I mean, maybe we're going to have electric water trucks sometime soon. I don't know. But that, that was, that was my point.
No, I agree that the trucks are a problem. And I think this fixes it.
Go ahead. Into the mic, into the mic.
If there's no water onsite, they should not be able to truck in water, period.
Well, that's, if the well is looking suspicious, well, then I would allow them to truck water until things improve.
The well's looking suspicious, then you go to the EIR, and it's not appropriate to be using that land for growing.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I would like to put in a clarification, as Peter suggested, that it, that there has to be sufficient water on the property.
I'm sorry. I need to take a deep breath. Because, go ahead, Karen.
Then we're going back to what we said earlier. So if there is no water on the property, they should not be able to truck in water. That's going to mess up somebody else's road, possibly, and it's going to cause problems for everybody else. And it's not everybody else's fault that there's no water on their property.
So, this, sorry. Okay, and so for me, this is no longer an urgency ordinance where we're permitting backwards. This is an alternative that if, for some reason, the supervisors were to adopt it, then I would expect every grower, every registrant, to be permitted from their water, to their power source, to their hoop houses, to their fences, to whatever requires a legal county permit, the same as I, as a commercial business owner, have to permit what I do. If you want to be a legitimate business, and you want to be recognized as legitimate, you would act in the same manner as any other commercial industry in this county getting a license. So, I don't think we go backwards anymore. We don't say you can haul water in. I don't know of any other business, except for we're paving roads and we need to keep the dust down, or we're logging, and we're, but that's what a water truck's for. Now, it's time to have a permanent alternative that says, you don't get to do it, and then say, I want to permit. This time, you get permitted, then you do it. You can't do it backwards anymore. That was the biggest issue I had with the urgency ordinance, was, well, we were already doing it. Whoa, okay, but now you don't have to come into compliance? No more. Now it's time for compliance. Or ban it.
I'm saying, compliance.
No, what you're saying is, we can still cheat. I don't want to cheat anymore.
I'm not, no. Okay. Then we have the mitigation measure that Commissioner Wooster was talking about, that talks about alternative sources will be used until the water level comes back up to a certain level. Are you just saying there can be no alternative sources?
It's what the EIR says.
No, the EIR has the provision that...
For mitigating. If they can reduce it and bring it back up. But if the wells are going to go dry, and that the area that they're in goes dry, then the state's going to tell you, there is no water there, there's nothing to draw from, there shouldn't be usage there. You're talking about fracturing underwater, groundwater tunnels and everything else when you run it dry. You can't do that.
We're not running it dry because of the mitigation measure that Commissioner Wooster put up, and we took states...
And if his mitigation doesn't work, it goes dry.
Now, I get to talk, if you let me.
That's all.
The mitigation measure and the possible use of water trucks only, I mean, it cuts in, when there's a suspicion there's something wrong, there's a, there's a sign that there is a problem with the, with the wells. And this sign is happening three years before what CCWD says is a valid, you know, measurement of where the water's going.
Let me give you...
If people are going to need to reduce their, their water usage by 50%, and just hope that the water level's going to be going back up without any use of water trucks, that's one alternative. The only time that I'm suggesting that water trucks can be used is to transport water when that mitigation measure 3.5 has cut in, and we don't know yet whether the long-term water table is dropping or not. We're putting people out of business on an interim basis that probably, that may well not be necessary. That's all.
It sounds like the chair's concern is primarily with the road damage that the heavy water trucks do. And, I mean, we've already talked about mitigation 3.5-3. The last sentence suggests an alternate, in fact, it requires an alternative water source in this situation where the water level's gone down. Maybe the answer is to simply limit the size of the trucks, or require them to repair the roads if they damage it, or something. I don't know, I don't know that it's... Maybe what you've seen, obviously, it's something you've seen and observed.
I bet you there's people sitting here that can send you photos of what happened to their roads.
Perhaps with this new approach, eliminating the RR and RA's, we're all kind of assuming the number of actual registrants is probably going to be decreasing.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, and, and they're also going to larger parcels, more remote parcels, maybe this water truck damage issue really isn't going to be happening.
We will be talking later on, and this is another one where I'm not sure of the correct, talking about rim fees and whether, whether the properties have to be directly onto county roads, but at least that speaks to, to road, road repair.
I don't know of any project that we approve in this county, if they don't have a valid water source, gets approved. Why would I set a standard lower for something like this whenever no other project can be approved under these terms and conditions?
We're not talking about approving new applicants. We've already limited this to the registrants who have passed muster or are in the process. We're not talking about new people coming in.
No, we're not. We're talking about if I am on a grow site, I'm moving my registration over to another piece of property, and I don't have a valid water source. You're saying it's okay to haul it?
No, I'm saying it needs to be a valid water source. It's only if what has been permitted as a valid water source starts showing signs of stress, then...
Then you're going to let them haul it in?
Then the 3.5-3 would cut in. But no, I think, I think we should have full requirements as far as the permitting.
Okay, so we have full requirements on the water, but you're saying if the well is failing, like the EIR describes under the testing standards, we're going to allow them to correct it by hauling water in?
Yes, but we could have a limitation of two years on that?
Two years?
Sometime limitation?
All right. I think that you and I are in disagreement here, and it's okay. So I'm going to poll the other commissioners and let them, if they poll with you, that's fine. I mean, then it goes forward. I'm good with that. I just, we can't hang up on this for too long. It's already 2:30, and we haven't even gotten to 17.91.
And I don't like water trucks at all, either.
Okay. So Commissioner Wooster, unless you have other comments you'd like to make on this, what would be your recommendation here?
Well, if I understand it, what Commissioner Latish has come up with would essentially outlaw the situation where somebody has a grow with no onsite water source whatsoever.
Right.
Never did, depended on water trucks, that's out.
Right.
That's what this does.
That part's good.
And the only time that a water truck can be used is when you already had the well onsite, and it's going down on you. And in order to protect your neighbors, you can't be drawing it down anymore until it recovers. Only in that situation do you get to use a water truck. Now, probably there should be a time limit on how long you get to do this. Couple years sounds okay to me. And with that, I would agree with Commissioner Latish's suggestion.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
I don't agree with it at all. I don't think that water trucks should be able to be brought to the property for any reason.
Commissioner Battelli?
I would agree with the way Commissioner Wooster worded it.
Okay, that's three both.
So would I.
So we can move on to the next one.
Is it clear to staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mitigation Measure 3.2-3 would apply with the assumption that if a cultivator is already using photovoltaic... Say that word.
Photovoltaic?
Cells or other alternative energy sources, the calculation of the reduction would be from what the cultivator's operation would have been had the cultivator not been using photovoltaic cells or other energy sources.
First, let's ask Peter if you think this is...
This measure is no longer necessary.
Good. So we can scratch that out, and you did a great job of reading it.
Mitigation Measure 3.2-4C, 75-foot setbacks would not apply, given the larger setback requirement stated in Alternative 4. I think that we've already cleared that issue up in most places.
I think we should just say, end the sentence after "apply," because we'd have said that in some circumstances, well, it's just whatever.
Okay. Everybody's good so far?
Did we just eliminate E? I couldn't...
No, we actually eliminated the word "apply."
No, no. We stopped it after "apply." Mitigation Measure 3.2-4C, 75-foot setbacks would not apply, period.
Okay.
Now, that, that particular measure wouldn't apply. The other things that we have stated and normal county requirements apply.
Okay. F, mitigation Measure 3.9-2. Rim fees shall apply to all permit holders in addition to words, and water truck shall be inserted between the words "employee" and "trips." Mitigation 3.9.2. Do you have that up? You want to read it real quick?
Oh, yeah. Mitigation Measure 3.9-2 was participation in county road impact mitigation fee.
What page are you on?
This is page ES12 of the draft. Draft. And this says, "The county shall amend the proposed ordinance to reflect the following text in question, in sections, so-and-so, and so-and-so, and so-and-so. Participate in the county's approved road impact mitigation rim fee program prior to initiation of operational activities. Fees assessed for each cannabis-related activity will be based on the potential one-way employee trips that could be generated per day during peak operations and determined by the Calaveras County Public Works Department." And the "and water trucks," I was going to put in it, the, the fee would be based on the potential one-way employee and water truck trips that could be generated. Now, my, my understanding, Peter, with this, is that for the rim fees to apply, the property has to be on a public, a county-maintained road or a state highway. Is that correct?
No, it's not correct.
Oh, good.
So the rim fee, the rim fee applies to any building permit, currently, the rim fee applies to any building permit based on the average daily trips that that use generates. So, for example, a single-family home in a rural area is typically 10 trips per day. Multi-family is seven. Commercial uses are based on a square footage, based on the type of use and the type of traffic that's generated. It's typically based on customers and employees. And there's, you know, a whole science of analyzing trip generation. There's a trip generation manual that's, you know, that thick.
So it sounds like putting water trucks in there might be...
It's probably unnecessary, and if, I mean, we're going to focus on water trucks, we just said, you really can't have them except in an emergency. I think that if you're concerned about trucks, there's also, you know, delivery of soils, there's other trucks, you know? But I, I think that rather than it be too detailed, the, the nexus study that's necessary to support whatever that fee needs to be would be handled by Public Works in a way that is supportable, just as we would assess a fee for a gas station or a restaurant or a single-family home.
And the fact that the actual, the permit is on a property that shares a private road with other people would not exempt...
The rim fee applies to county-maintained roads, county roads. And so we do an assessment of what's it cost to maintain our roads and construct new roads to support new development. As that new development comes in, they pay a certain fee. As the fund builds up, then we say, okay, now we have enough money to make this road improvement over here. But it's only two county roads.
No, I understand...
But everyone has to use a county road to get to the private road typically, or state roads.
Okay, so, so this, this can apply, but it's still, it would still be up to the neighbors to agree on the maintenance of a private road between the county road and the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do you need the word "employee" in there? Why isn't it just "trips," no matter who?
Yeah. I mean, do you need anything other than the fact that it applies? That the rim...
Do you need the word "water truck"?
I think if you, potential trips is sufficient.
I think potential trips. Sure.
So we're not putting in water truck?
No, because I think it's not necessary.
We're not ruling them out, either.
That's right. So there, there really needs to be... It's just that that will apply. We could take the rim fee, we can take F out of my suggestions, because all these mitigation measures in the EIR apply unless we say they don't. Okay? All right. I think, okay, nine is pretty much housekeeping. I mean, you just have to have some provision in this about an agent for service, and I wanted to make sure it was... Basically, I took this, I think, out of the, excuse me, draft ban on ordinance. I don't know that we need to have this in here, but it's important that it be a strong...
I think that's already addressed.
I think that's typically an application, you know, we, we have an application form that's required to be filled out, and rather than have what's in the application itself in code, we can adjust it as necessary, and this is something that's important, we'll make sure we get it in there.
Okay. That would be great with me. Okay. Unless anybody else has a problem, moving on to 10. Every compliant farm that is forced to relocate due to the above provisions shall be allowed a single lateral transfer of its license to a property meeting the above standards. Those relocating farms shall be allowed, and we talked about this this morning, just two more, two years to restore that property and to move to an appropriate property with appropriate permits. If they temporarily have to cease operations during this transition, they can maintain good standing by paying a placeholder fee.
How long would they stay in good standing by paying a... How long would they stay in good standing by paying a fee?
Well, they have two years to make the switch. So once they make the switch and they're ready to plant, I think that the placeholder fee could only last for two years.
Did you just say they have two years to make the switch?
One year to shut down.
Well, remember this morning, I mean, I like the one year to shut down and two more years to restore that property and move, but this morning, we already discussed number 10, and I thought the consensus of the commission was to wipe out the one year to shut down and...
The consensus was, I think, that we were not going to allow a year to shut down.
I think that we need to...
Yeah, that's why I'd say, I did not read that as part of what I just read. I read, I crossed out "one year to shut down and," so it shall be allowed two, crossing out more, "years to restore that property and move to an appropriate property.
They need one year to shut it down. And the only reason I'm going to change my decision about this is because if they're in the middle of processing or something, they need to be able to complete it.
That's, that was my feeling. I agree with you.
Well, under the urgency ordinance, they already have ninety days...
Ninety days.
...to continue under it, and the harvest is going to be over relatively soon. So I think that the deletion of the phrase "one year to shut down" is appropriate.
And I want to add some language, that because we're transitioning between moves, I want it to be very clear that the license where they're moving to will not be activated until number, the current location is clean of all hazards, chemicals, whatever could be left behind to cause damage to the property. So they can't be operating on their current property and moving to the new one, and the one that they're leaving has to be certified as clean, and then their license gets activated to where they're going.
But they can take all steps to prepare that second property.
Absolutely, they can prepare. They just aren't going to start growing and cultivating until they're certified on the other one. I mean, they're going to have to be growing on one while they're prepping the other. That takes time, takes permits.
What about the cost? Are they going to have to pay five grand or whatever their fee is to get this new location?
It would be the same as what they currently have. I wouldn't make them pay twice.
Well, it does say appropriate permits. It might be interpreted to mean they got to pay for it. I think, I think we should have something in there.
By that, I meant building and...
Building and stuff.
Building, grading, well, yeah, whatever that requires.
So we, if we say construction permits, what's a general... We always look back at Peter, and he's trying to keep track of what else we've been saying.
So, so, under the urgency ordinance, there's a $5,000 fee, and it's an annual renewal that also costs $5,000. That's really up to you and the board to determine whether or not that is appropriate or necessary. Now, there is a draft fee study that was prepared. It's still sitting in the CAO's office for final review, and I think that, you know, we should look at the fees to ensure that we aren't collecting more than we should be, but we're collecting enough to cover the cost of it. So I think if we just say, you know, the applicable fee, you know, based on the fee study or a fee study, then we will be recovering our costs, which is important, but we are not collecting more than we should be, which is equally important.
Right. Which I should explain that, I mean, if it's a fee, you can't collect more than the actual cost.
So it's going to cost the county staff time and resources to inspect and verify that the new site, you know, complies with all the requirements. So I think a fee of some sort is appropriate, whatever that might cost.
Well, you're going to have to do a study on that and a cost analysis anyway, so that would be set by the county. I don't think we should weigh in on that.
I think it's, is appropriate fees sufficient to...
Yes.
They can work that out.
They can work that out. They certainly can. And the last thing I had here was the criminal background thing, and if we don't need it in this document, that's fine with me.
Well, wait a minute, are we done with 10?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because, is it left that they have two years to restore the property?
Mm-hmm.
No. No, I thought we agreed earlier, we were going by the urgency ordinance, ninety days to...
That's to wrap up that property. Look, I mean, I haven't been here a very long time, but I know that permits are taking a long time in this county to do, and I think two years to actually restore that property and move to the appropriate property and getting the appropriate permits is really remarkable.
Okay, let me rephrase this. Okay, let me rephrase this, because you're not saying they have two years to restore the property. You're saying they have two years to make the move.
Yeah.
Which would include their restoral.
Yeah. Yes.
The whole thing in total.
That's what I'm saying, which I think is optimistic.
And I'm saying they don't get to activate the license on the new property. They can get it ready, but they don't get to activate it until the other one's cleared of all environmental hazards.
I understand.
So, and then I think earlier, the discussion was one year.
One year.
Look, I thought that, I thought that we were not going to say that if you are in an RR zone or an RA zone, that you got to continue to operate for a full another year past the effective date of this ordinance. I thought you are out of business unless, unless the urgency ordinance gave you more time.
Yeah, that was my understanding of this morning's...
Okay, so we're not talking a year to shut down operations. We're talking whatever the urgency ordinance gives you, if anything. Okay? Now, that I thought was behind us. Now, the question is, how long should people have to restore the property they've had to move out of? On that subject, my suggestion was that we go to what Mr. Lattish came up with with respect to the ban ordinance on abandoned sites. We've already been through this. And incorporate those provisions, which are somewhat phased, but you have to do some things immediately and other things you have more time to do. And actually, the ban ordinance has all of the, the draft ban ordinance has all of the requirements that you do have to do, like get a grading permit if you didn't get one before and get things fixed up. It seems to me the simple way to deal with this is to take what we already did in the draft ban ordinance with respect to abandoned sites and apply them here to the situation where people have to move in terms of the restoration.
It's what they need to do. Yes, I think that's, that would be very clear, but I think we'd also have the two years to accomplish this, not lose your, not lose your permit that you currently have.
What he's saying, what he, okay, let me, let me see if I can help you here. What he's saying is...
I think I understand.
You think you understand?
Mm-hmm.
What do you understand? Never mind. Let me just talk, let me talk for a second. What he's saying is, they shut down agreeing to the terms of the urgency ordinance that we discussed earlier, or the ban ordinance, whichever one you're talking about. And then, if they're shut down, but they're still trying to find time to buy property, get relocated, there is a two-year period that they could play a, pay a placeholder fee while they're trying to make that adjustment and move. Not everybody will be able to find a piece of property and get it prepped and graded and ready in a year. That's going to be tough.
I don't, I think I understand the placeholder fee.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't have a problem with that. I'm having a problem with the two years to restore the property.
The two years to restore is not what he meant to say. He was applying with what we talked about earlier. The two years to restore, I think, was you're going to get two years to move. Am I correct?
Well, yeah, but I, if you want to split up the idea of restoring and moving to the new property, we can do that.
Yes.
Well, they are two different ideas.
They are two different things.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. That's fine. So, is it reasonable to say they can shut down and restore in one year? I mean, that's involving getting a lot of permits.
No, no, the shutdown...
Yes.
...happens immediately, except as modified by the urgency ordinance, which is now in place.
And basically, that's 180 days, because they have 90 for...
That's shutdown.
You're trying to deal with three things.
Yes, exactly.
One is a shutdown. That happens as fast as we can do it under the terms of the urgency ordinance. The other is, how long do you have to start up someplace else? That's the placeholder fee.
Right.
That's fine. The third thing is, one day you have to fix the property, restore the property you're moving out of. I do not understand that we need two years to do that.
That's under the first clause. It says they have 90 days to finish out their grow and crop it and do whatever it is. Then they have 90 days to return it to its almost normal condition.
I don't believe there's any timeframe established in the proposed ban ordinance.
There is not.
They say they need to start immediately. They need to shut down and they need to start, but there's no timeframe established.
Isn't that why we referred to the urgency ordinance on that, because there was two 90-day clauses in there, one's...
That's the shutdown.
That's the shutdown.
That's not restored.
There's not, there's the ninety days upon effective date to conclude your operations.
Commissioner Wooster has dragged us into the realm of reason. Got three things to deal with, and I was trying to lump it all together. I think having something in here that says that the requirements for restoration and, you know, that that one section applies, we could also apply the section that was the abandonment section, in case somebody just scoots, you know, for the owner's obligations. And that was the section that divided things into things you had to do right away and the other things.
Correct.
Have those two sections, the language of those two sections apply here as appropriate.
Yes.
And then all we have to do is come up with the time under this ordinance that we run a, want to place, a requirement that we want to place on the restoration, because shutdown is already taken care of in the urgency ordinance. How long does it take to restore and, which involves a bunch of permits, and it could involve a bunch of permits, and how long can they continue to play, pay a placeholder license to keep things alive while they're getting all the permits for their new property? So, all we need to do, I think, is to plug time figures in on those two things. Time to restore and time to get all your permits and be ready to, ready to roll on your new one.
If I can make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Under item 10 on Mr. Lattish's recommendation, if we strike the phrase "to restore that property," then this only deals with the ability to relocate and have a placeholder. Then we probably want to somehow incorporate the restoration provisions of the ban ordinance into this, but we might want to go back and look at that and establish a timeframe of when that to be done, because there is no timeframe in there.
Yeah. Well, for current purposes, let's establish a timeframe here, and I think we'll probably find it's the same timeframe. So, and those...
I think realistically, if they're looking at getting various permits from the county, from the state, in order to appropriately restore a place, it may take more than a year.
Uh, would it take more than two years?
I would think two years would be sufficient.
Two years would be sufficient. Okay, so...
And that would then correlate with the ability to relocate, so everything should be able to be done within two years and then able to activate the permit.
Well, in that case, we could put back in to restore that property in here. If the two years does apply to both, we could say the two years to restore that property pursuant to whatever the section was.
When you're saying "restore," are you talking about returning the property they're currently growing on to its proper condition?
To proper condition, suitable for later...
Okay, so the issue that we have here, that we spoke about earlier, is that we have people that are being severely impacted by these grows. We are now at the point where cultivation is happening, right now, real soon. If they're not already done, they're doing it or going to. Okay? I don't want them replanning. I want them to transition if this even goes through. I don't want another grow that's going to...
We're not talking about replanning. I mean, I...
You're saying restoring. Why would I give them two years? Why would they need two years to restore when their grow is ending now?
I think you're confusing the term "restore." It doesn't mean restore a cultivation site. It means restore it to its, to some other use. The restoration provision...
But why would it take two years?
One year.
It's all the permits.
A grading plan takes eight months. I mean, they wouldn't really get grading plans done in a year.
The permits take that long.
Well, if we've got all these measures, timeout, no, sit down, please. If we have all these Measure C funds, let's get some employees in the county and get this processed if this were to pass. There's no reason we should be sitting here and lagging and lag, stop, lagging and lagging and lagging. Let's get it rocking and rolling if we can. I mean, they're extra higher jobs. Nobody wants them because they're not permanent. I get that.
So, just, just as an example, for someone that graded illegally and now needs to do restoration grading, it may take two to three months for an engineer to prepare those plans.
Okay.
Then it has to be plan-checked by the county, and then the plans issued and grading contractor worked out. That's probably a minimum of four to six months right there.
Okay.
You also might have fish and game requirements, water board requirements. There could be a number of different things. I mean, hopefully, they don't waste...
So, is two years is probably not inaccurate.
I don't think it's inaccurate. I think it's the...
Especially with our engineers being backlogged.
Exactly. I mean, many engineers just certainly aren't, simply aren't available.
Okay, so we need to, for me, I'm going to just address the commission here. Okay, if they need two years to restore, because I understand, being in the profession and having to hire an engineer just to do a septic system, it's taking forever. They're backlogged. I get that. We don't have a lot of engineers in the county to deal with. So if we said, "Okay, you're going to get two years to restore, but this is your last cultivation this fall, and you need to start the process of moving to an appropriate location. This is it." So you cultivate what you have. You haven't got any, you don't have any losses there, because we're going to allow you to get to December to lock it up and then start your restoration over the next two years, but don't recultivate unless you're on your new property.
And Commissioner Wooster took that into account, in that if this comes into effect, the urgency ordinance is repealed by this coming into effect. By then, there's that 90 days built in there, and 90 days, they're not going to replant because they, they can't have any other crop.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to poll the commissioners and find out where we're at, so we can move forward. Want to throw your 10 cents in?
Where we are is, if a compliant farm has to relocate because of the provisions that we've agreed to, they have to cease their operations within the time permitted by the urgency ordinance at the latest. And if the urgency ordinance doesn't give them any time because of the way the times work out, it's right now on the effective date. That's the shutdown. With respect to the restoration of the property, not restoration of cultivation, but restoration of the property to the condition it should be in, I think that we're, what we're doing is, we are incorporating the provisions of the draft ban ordinance that apply to abandoned sites, but we're incorporating, because we already did that work, but we are putting a maximum period of two years for this restoration, which would also, by the way, go back and apply to what we did in the ban ordinance, because we didn't have a maximum period there. I think that's what we're doing.
The only, the only point I'd say right now is that...
Okay, I'm going to have you, hold on one second, because I want to run through the commissioners. They've heard from both you and I too much.
Sure.
Okay, two years, I get the two years, but I want to make sure that it says no more, no more cultivation, any type onsite. After they've completed what they already have, no seedlings, no nothing on the site.
If it's on one of those zones that are being eliminated?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Vachelli?
I thought we were also talking about a third time. That is the time to get the new site in operation. Did I miss?
I thought that was the two-year period.
No, no, that's restoring.
But I think it was both two years.
We've now got it back to those two.
I guess it's the word "restoring" that's bothering me.
It's terrible, yes.
In the, in the one sense, where you're talking about the new property, you're not restoring the new property, you're transferring to it, you're initiating a new operation. Okay.
Well, that, that, I don't...
And that may take two years with all the delays that we are still having. So to that extent, I agree with it, yeah.
Okay, so two years, two years. Okay, so, two years, two years, and the, what did I write it down at? The cease operations and shutdowns. I think we're pretty close to agreement here, right?
Yeah, I, I think we, we look to the urgency ordinance for the shutdown, and that's, that's built in. And two years, I would say, to restore that property under section so-and-so, which is the equivalent to the section that we put in the, that we have in the ban ordinance. But there is a difference, there were two sections in the ban ordinance. One applied to the, to the operator. One applied to abandoned, the other applied to abandoned property and gave the owner requirements as to what to do when. So, I think it would be only the one section that actually dealt with the restoration. So, but yes, the two years, two years to take care of the old property and two years to move to the appropriate property, and, and we still have the question about appropriate permits, whether that-
So, at the end of the two years, if they have not done anything, that this policy holder fee and all that will just go away and they lose everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if we should have some extension request or something?
Extension on four, on four years.
No, no. We're talking about the same two years.
Same two-
Two years and two years.
No, no.
No, 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 same two years.
Stay, stay out of it. We all understand what's going on. It's two years, two years.
Okay, so, just for clarity purposes, hold on a second. Just for clarity purposes, the urgency ordinance guidelines would be for the shutdown. Then we have a two-year period for restoration, and the same two-year period running, they're separate issues. Restoration's two years and moving is two years with a placeholder fee. So, in those same two years, they're, they're the same exact two years, but one is restoring the property, one is getting the next one registered and permitted. There's not, it's two years across the board.
Two.
Now, does, do the commissioners agree?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, we, we done with number ten?
Just one other item. I just wanna make sure that the full commission agrees with this. Chair Mutertie suggested that the new license would not be activated until there's verification of restoration of prior site. Does everyone concur with that?
Yes.
And that by itself does, would not keep them from getting the permits and everything else on their new property. They just wouldn't have the license to-
No, they're just not growing until it's done.
That's good.
They're gonna be running them side by side, clean up and set up.
Right.
But no activation until it's clean and environmentally hazards are clear.
Okay.
Now, should we have something in here as to how we're gonna have it verified that the restoration is complete?
I'm gonna leave that to the county to verify, because that's not our department. You can have the environmental health department go out and do a certification, which is probably the appropriate department, to go out and look at the land. I mean, that's up to the county. You guys have that figured out in your own, right?
Well, that, that will take some crafting, because there's probably multiple agencies that will need to do inspections.
Okay.
But we'll make sure that that's incorporated, if that's-
That's, that's out of my purview.
But in general, the restoration has to be complete and inspected and certified.
Okay. I just wanna hit this last item, which is the sheriff's department. I think there was some new language that was already submitted, Peter.
I think that's for the dispensary ordinance.
That's dispensary. Well, can't we use that for this as well?
Basically, I, I use the language from the proposed ban ordinance, I think, for that, except I didn't, I eliminated some of the details.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, one of the problems that we've seen through the appeals that has been an issue is that we've got, like, bogus registrations. It's, the person that's actually running the site is the, is not the registered grower because they're a felon, or they have a criminal record. So, they registered their wife, who knows nothing about their grow. They show, it's a, it's a false person coming before us that registered as the grower, but they know nothing about it, so they have their husband or their partner speaking to the grow and the appeal. And that is an issue for me, and why aren't we doing a background check on the main worker? So, they're naming, they're naming the registrant, and they get the background check, but the actual manager of the property that we have contact with when the code enforcement went out there is the one that's really on the property. So, I really think that there need to be multiple background checks. Why are we just stopping at the registrant?
Or do we-
The manager should be going through these background checks.
Yeah, or, or do we put a specific thing in there that the registrant or the permitee shall be the active manager of the property and-
Well, I just know, I just-
Then you could deny if they're not.
I just know, going through these appeal processes, that-
No, I agree.
The, the, the bad has been exposed, and unfortunately, there's a lot of good out there, there's a lot of bad out there, and everybody has to pay the price, because we have to close the loopholes up.
I, I think broadening the scope of the background checks would be easier than trying to verify that the individuals who are inside are the same people that registered. I don't know how we would do that.
Okay, so maybe what you guys could do is, I know that the sheriff's department's had issues with this, so maybe what you could do as we are, and, and this is more of a staff thing, is maybe talk to the sheriff, see what would work, what wouldn't work, talk to code compliance, find out where the issues are on backgrounds, and run it through them.
The sheriff did give us language that he was happy with.
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay.
And it was on the dispensaries, but I'm saying if that's good language and the sheriff likes it, it could be across the board.
Yeah, whatever's good language in one is good language in all.
Well, we have language proposed with respect to the dispensaries in terms of background checks. I don't know why that would work here.
I don't know if I have that piece of paper.
The letter, Peter emailed it.
It came after the agenda packet went out, but I think that I would like to just, if it's okay with the commissioners, leave that in the hands of the planning department to take it up with the sheriff on how to handle it.
Yep.
Yes.
And legal counsel, obviously. Okay. So, we're good with that? You guys are good with that?
Yes.
We included you, now you're stuck with it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, can we take a break? Come back in ten minutes and see what we're gonna do with this complete package?
Great.
Okay. All my commissioners are present, and I wanna bring up, we obviously are not going to get done today. We're gonna be coming back to meet. If we meet on Monday, we only have until noon, and that's it. I know, Tuesday, we can go all day if we needed to. I know. I know, can you move it back? So, the problem is, I've got commissioners that have other obligations, and so we need to firm down. We've got public comment on seventeen point nine one, so that could go on for a long, long time. I, I can't guarantee you we could get done by twelve o'clock, but it does have to end at twelve on Monday, so we have to pick between Monday and Tuesday.
Because nobody wants to work on a Saturday.
Nobody wants to work on Saturday?
I don't care.
I will do on Saturday. Saturday's actually better for me.
I've set aside Monday, but I, and I should think we could do things by noon on Monday. It, how, when do we have to be out today?
Well-
What's our, what's our rental agreement?
As late as you wanna go on a Friday night.
It's Friday.
Party dish.
It's Friday night!
Renegades calling. Oop.
I've never met this man before the commission. Okay, so, let's, let's get done what we can. I need you guys to be mentally thinking about, and, and let's see how far we get to five o'clock, but be thinking about what Monday or Tuesday's gonna look like. We have Brown Act advertising guidelines we have to meet, so we do have to state where we're going to be, how, what time we're going to be there. I mean, we could start at six in the morning if we needed to. Give us a couple more hours. What do you think?
I start work every day at six o'clock, so that's not a problem for me.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda item at hand here. So, and it was, okay, I had a couple of people come up to me and make suggestions during the break that, I forgot what they were. One was changing word from restored to remediation, and Peter said that they've got that part covered, and they're keeping it as to restoration. Is that what the word that gets used?
Yeah, I, we will have to define these terms ultimately, so it's not-
Right.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, and then the other thing that I wanna throw at all of you, because a really good point was brought up, and that is, and it's the truth, because I'm having to deal with the county and permits on a constant basis in my industry, and the way that the urgency ordinance was handled is, as long as they applied their processing and they've done everything within their power to move their project forward, but the county is stalled because they ha, don't have enough staff, nobody wants a part-time job, they can't hire, like I suggested, that they should be, the county should have the right to do an extension to get their project up and running, but that two-year timeframe is what we're shooting for, shouldn't have to have an extension, should be able to get it done, but if the county causes a delay, everybody needs to understand, the county has to offer an extension.
I think that's very reasonable and fair.
We expect it done in two years. Got it. Okay, so, now, we have alternative two, and I think what Commissioner Wooster referenced as alternative five, is that what we're calling this?
This is four.
Well, it's not really four, it's a big modified.
Four as we're modifying it.
Well, the reason, yeah, four as modified, because-
Okay.
That, that's in the EIR.
I, I would, I would hesitate to start adding it as a separate alternative in the EIR. Let's just call it the planning commission's alternative regulatory ordinance. Or what's, or something along those lines. Rather than giving it a number, rather than trying to tie it to the EIR, this is a, a variation on several different alternatives within the EIR, all within the scope of the EIR, and this is just your alternative recommendation to the board. I think just call it that.
Whatever's good.
Okay. We're gonna need a motion.
So, I have, did I pass it out? No, I don't think I did. A revised-
Bring a court, bring a court.
At the mic. At the mic.
In your alternative, there is no provision for any personal or medical, personal or caregiver, personal, and it is only concerned with commercial. Therefore-
I will take that under advisement. Thank you.
State law.
It is state law, but there are some provisions in the state law that this county needs to address, be, because there's some issues out there with it.
But for the agenda purposes, we were talking about commercial right now.
Correct. We're talking commercial right now.
And I guess the other thing we, the other thing we haven't discussed is other components of the original ordinance, which includes manufacturing, testing, distribution. If it's the intent of the commission that all of those uses will not be permitted, that's an easy addition to the proposal to the board. If you want to discuss that further, then we need to continue on with this discussion. And I think that the, we probably should address maybe two other issues, whether or not this is just for medical marijuana, or there's any consideration of adult use, and whether the personal six plants need to be indoor or outdoor.
You want to add those to the alternative four? You want those separate? How do you wanna take that?
Well, again, where you're, you are providing a, an alternative recommendation, should the board decide they don't want to ban it. You're, as far as the discussion yesterday, the poll was taken, majority of the commission supports a ban ordinance. We went through, like, wordsmithed that draft ordinance, but should the board say, no, we don't wanna do that, we believe a regulatory ordinance is more appropriate, then you are making a recommendation of what should be in the regulatory ordinance.
So, how much of the ban, do you wanna, the ban language regarding these other issues, do you wanna preserve? And, or do you wanna change them at all?
Well, Prop sixty-four exists whether there's a ban or not. That, that's not-
But we have the provision. We, we have the ability to require it to be indoor only.
Right.
Under the state law, it could be indoor or outdoor. We, we can't prohibit it entirely, but we can limit it to indoor cultivation only.
And-
That's what's in the current ban.
Just one, one point on that is that if we, and I'm not saying which is the best result, if we ban the outdoor personal growing, that makes us ineligible for sharing in the cannabis tax, sharing that the state has provided.
Under personal?
Under parcel.
You said personal.
Personal.
We're talking about personal, not commercial.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm just saying that that, if we're gonna deal with personal and whether it should be limited to indoors or be indoors and outdoors, it's just a fact that if we limit it to indoors, we, we don't get a share of the cannabis tax.
I, I don't think that's necessarily correct.
I've not read that.
If, if we do not permit-
Commercial.
Commercial cultivation.
Well, no, that's-
Then we are prohibited from collecting the tax. The personal-
Ethan now, Ethan now has my, my copy of the statutes.
It's right here, on your line.
Got, I've got it.
Well, I gotta tell you right now, I'll forego all that money, because it's gotta go indoors. I am very concerned, because you are talking about, you know, growing twenty-two thousand square feet on four acres right now, and people complaining of odors. Prop sixty-four overrules everything, and you are talking about a quarter acre lot with six plants. You might as well leave the four plants and twenty-two thousand square feet, because this now goes into every neighborhood, and it, every neighborhood doesn't have two acres, so the six plants on personal level, for me, need to go indoor. Yes, I know the risks is higher. Yes, I've read all of it. Yes, I've read the greenhouse gases, and I've read people can't afford to put their six plants inside. And excuse me, I'm sorry. Would you please not interrupt? Excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Um, so, for me, having the six plants outdoors, I think, I'm not opposed to them growing it outdoors, except for the fact that Prop sixty-four sticks it in your face whether you want it or not, period. And we're talking about people that live with fence lines, like, right next to each other. You're not gonna get away from the odor if you live in a condominium or a, they're growing it on their back cold balcony, so for me, it needs to be an indoor plant. I'm sorry. And, and I know it's risky doing that, because I'm in the real estate industry. I have seen the full-time rental market get destroyed. I walk into a house and the floor has holes cut in it, the windows are taken out in plexiglass with venting going through it. I know what kind of damage can be done to a house with an indoor grow, and it's a full-time rental. So, I'm opposed to it being outdoors. I know that there's a risk to the indoors, but the landlords do have a right to say you are not growing personal grow in the house. They have that right. It is still federally illegal and a Schedule I drug, so-
And I'm not, I'm not arguing with that position, I just am trying to get the facts out.
I don't want the money.
Okay, if, if, nobody cares about the money, uh-
It's not worth it, you mean.
What the facts are or something else.
It's all we're, all we did was just worked on an alternative to get it out of people's faces and their noses to put it right back in. I, I can't do that. But you guys have a vote on this.
I understand.
Oh, I am totally behind you on this. Thank you, Karen.
I am, I am too, but on the tax issue, under this alternative, we are permitting outdoor cultivation, commercially.
That's true.
Correct, so we do get the money.
Why does that disqualify us?
Okay, the, the language in the revenue, new language in the Revenue and Taxation Code-
What's the number, please?
We're getting, this is Revenue and Taxation Code, Section three, four, oh, one, nine, which has the cannabis tax in it, and it, after giving millions away to everything else, it splits up what's left by different percentages, and the twenty percent of what's left shall be deposited to the state and local government law enforcement account and dispersed as follows, and one of those is, to the Board of State and Community Corrections for making is to the Board of State and Community Corrections for making grants to local governments to assist with law enforcement, fire protection, or other local programs addressing public health and safety associated with the implementation of the Control, Regulate, and Tax Adult Use of Marijuana Act. The Board shall not make any grants to local governments which have banned the cultivation, including personal cultivation under Paragraph III of Subdivision B of Section 11362.2 of the Health and Safety Code, or retail sale of cannabis or cannabis products pursuant to...
We're not banning it, we're banning it outdoors.
Well, but I, now, when we go to Health and Safety Code, Section, Google, just a sec. Yeah, I don't have my copy of the Health and Safety Code. Here we are, Health and Safety Code, Section 11362.2, what did I say? This is giving the state permission to ban certain things, and it, one of that, one of that section, subsection is notwithstanding Paragraph III of Section, blah, 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 a county may completely prohibit persons from engaging in actions and conduct under Paragraph III of Subdivision A of Section 11362.1 outdoors upon the grounds of a private residence. That's giving us permission to ban the personal grow outdoors, but if we do that, I'm just stating, this is, is my understanding of the law, if we do that, why that brings into this allocation of the tax funds provision, the fact that we won't get any.
I don't, I don't hear the statute operating that way.
Okay.
It seems to me what that statute is saying is if you ban all cultivation, including outdoor cultivation, then you don't, you're not eligible for the grant money. That would make sense because you're not allowing any cultivation that you need to enforce provisions as to. But when you are permitting outdoor cultivation, as we are proposing to do one of this ordinance, I do not read, hear that language, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's...
As applying.
It's the trick of the including, you know, which, there's always been a lot of talk about what does including mean, and you certainly, that's certainly a valid reading of the statute. So I don't know what the state would say, whether we lose it or not.
But under that somewhat ambiguous way of looking at how the statute works, I continue to be in favor of not permitting...
Yeah.
Outdoor, personal cultivation for the reasons expressed by Commissioner Unitities.
And so we don't have to get back into these statutes again. It, it also prohibits it if, let's see, if we ban retail sale of cannabis or cannabis products pursuant to sections, well, or otherwise provided by law. If we ban retail sale, which, as I understand it, dispensaries or retail sales, if we ban that, we lose it no matter how we read that other section. So it's, it's up in the air.
You know what, we have an excise tax we can collect here in this county if we end up going that direction. I'm not willing to forego those props.
I understand.
Those, the money, I'm not gonna be bought on that. The county, the state put a carrot over the top of our head and said, here, eat it or you're gonna do without?
Yep.
Yeah, great.
Yep.
Okay, so, let's go, let's go back to the personal, Prop 64, six plants indoor, outdoor, do we want to go strictly indoor? Yes or no, starting down there?
Yes.
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 Doesn't matter.
Yes. Okay.
Four, four, two, doesn't matter, or indoor only on Prop 64.
Indoor only.
Indoor only, yeah.
Okay. I couldn't say abstain because you said doesn't matter. It's not really a good voting. Okay, so, next on the agenda that you want us to target?
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing.
Which is something I haven't considered at all. So what, what currently...
Currently, we don't allow manufacturing, distribution, or processing, blah, 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 in this county, period. We allow growing.
I think under the current circumstances, we'd stick with what we have, and if the Board of Supervisors wants to change it...
Let them be the ones to change it.
Let them be the ones to change it.
You just got five nods.
Okay.
Correct. Agreed.
Okay, next?
That was all that I had on my list.
Okay.
So have we handled the personal care and personal, I mean, the personal care, or caregiver, excuse me, have we handled that by what we've done?
What about caregiver?
Well, the, the...
What about caregiver?
That's what I'm saying.
Because personal and caregiver, we voted on the six plants, what are we doing with caregiver? Because isn't there a different option under that?
Well, we said, we said six plants regardless. I mean, under the state, they can have up to five patients, and the plants can be prescribed by the doctor for medical, but we, we can say what we want.
Put the mic down, please, so that people can hear you, because I think this is an important conversation.
The way we've, we've written the ordinance is that it's six plants regardless, and under state law, we are allowed to limit to the point of not prohibiting six indoor plants, period, regardless of personal care or caregiver. State law allows a primary caregiver to possess more cannabis than somebody who's just using it for personal use, but it's up to the county how much it wants to allow.
Okay, and Tuolumne County had 12 and 24, and they just voted to go six strict again? Is that what they did? They reversed it?
I think that's right. I don't, don't know for sure.
I'm good with the six.
I could use six. I mean, I'm good with six.
You're gonna use six, okay. He's gonna need some help with that.
My little meadow.
There you go.
So it has to be indoors.
It's, now, this is a subject we, I don't think, I don't know if we opened this to public comment or not. I, I don't know if a person, a personal caregiver needs more than six. You know, it's just a subject that I have not been informed on, and I'm...
Was that a point of order?
Well, I'm not sure that...
Okay, let's check.
Yeah.
Did we, did not open discussing Prop 64 to public comment? Is that part of the EIR encompassing the whole thing, or does it require public comment?
The, the EIR and the ordinance encompass the full range of uses that were included in the original proposed ordinance, up through the various alternatives, including a ban.
And we discussed in the ordinance, there were provisions, in the published ordinance, it was part of the agenda, there were the provisions to do with, with caregiver...
Okay.
...cultivation and personal cultivation were encompassed already, so...
Just wanna make sure that we are okay.
You know, we agendized it.
They were already agendized.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, let's start with you, six, 12, 24, what do you want for caregiver?
Do you have a point of order?
Yeah, real quick. Just a point of clarification.
Clarification or point of order?
Point of order for a clarification?
Start talking and she'll stop you if you're off line.
All I wanted to do was point out that under the urgency ordinance, we're currently allowed to process on-site to trim the cannabis.
Correct, and that will stay.
Okay, that will stay.
They're gonna keep that the same.
Under state law, under 64, that is changing, and the ability to process on-site is not going to continue. You're going to have to operate through a processing center, I believe.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop you. I'm gonna stop you.
Okay.
Only because, and I'm gonna give you an explanation, the, we voted to allow the supervisors to decide on manufacturing, distribution, and processing, and all of this is going straight to them, and I'm sure you're all gonna line up with that mic and make sure that we didn't address it, and you're gonna take it up with them. Okay.
I'm gonna, I just wanna clarify, the definition of cultivation under state law, under the new SB 94 means any activity involving the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, curing, grading, or trimming of cannabis. It's all part of cultivation. Processing is not a separate licensed activity anymore. Now, when we're talking about taking it and making it into brownies, or cooking with it, or making oils, that is manufacturing, and so to the extent they're talking about making their own products out of it, then we're no longer in cultivation territory. So that's how it is under, under...
Okay.
Malcursa.
That's what some people think.
Brownies sounded really good, didn't it? Look at that face. Okay.
Having no basis for my decision, I'll go with six.
Okay, so I have six, six, and Batelli, did you say six?
I have no idea. I really don't.
Right.
I didn't read up on it.
I think this is something that, I think, I think public comment before the voter supervisors is gonna have to enlighten them.
Okay, so for, for sending it forward and then giving them something to publicly comment on, do we wanna say six on caregiver and let the Board of Supervisors decide if that number needs to be larger?
Is there a way to send it on saying, this is something that needs to be done, but we haven't done it? I know that's...
We can send anything we want forward that we want, but they can choose to do whatever they desire because they're the final set.
Well, no, I understand. It's just that I, I feel rather irresponsible making health care decisions without any basis for it. I mean, and it's cutting back what we've allowed...
This, okay.
On caregivers.
Tell me again what we have now?
Right now?
Yeah.
So caregiver registration allows 100 square feet per patient, up to two patients.
Up to 200.
And I believe they are otherwise subject, no, hold on, subject to the same zoning requirements of the commercial growing, but they do not need to meet the same setback requirement.
Okay.
So these are outdoor grows.
I did receive public comment via email that talked about their medical need and that there was a big difference in our urgency ordinance and what the state Prop 64 is doing in the square footage versus the six plants.
Mm-hmm.
The preference in that email was that they wanted to keep their square footage versus going to just a limitation on plants. I think that, that maybe it sounds as if though there hasn't been enough review by the commission to take this up for vote, and that we should make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to review this and, and make a decision.
That may be the best correspondence at this point in time.
I agree.
It's just important to note that, just sort of talking apples and oranges, six plants is allowed by right for personal use.
Okay.
Whether it's used for medicinal purposes or recreation, it doesn't really matter.
Right.
If we have a permitting process that we're going to allow some other category of cultivation other than, and it probably is broken down to the various license types, cultivation license types, for a caregiver cultivation, then we're sort of opening up on a whole new level of discussion as to what zone should it go in, what standards should we have, are these the same as, as commercial? And so maybe at this point in time, unless you really want to get into it, defer to the Board on that issue.
Don't, don't we right now, under, right now, we have a registration fee for a personal and caregiver, right?
Right.
And under Prop 64, that's not required, correct? Unless we make it required?
Well, again, I think you're, you're mistaking, the six plants are allowed by right under Prop 64.
Okay.
Come, with a cultivation license for a caregiver.
Okay, they're gonna send this to the supervisors, I didn't read up enough.
And, and under, under the Adult Use Act, I'm assuming it's the same under Prop 94, or SB 94, but that we, in the state law allows, no, I'm sorry, this is under MRSA, not, not Prop 64. Under the original MRSA, there, you could have a caregiver's license, which allowed up to five patients, so up to 500 square feet. That was under, under MRSA, the state legislation that predated the Adult Use Act. We limited it, the county limited it to two patients, so 200 square feet. That was a restriction that we chose to do. We could do something similar if we wanted to. We could set up a whole nother range of standards.
But then we're talking indoor, indoor or outdoor also, I mean, that's...
That's true.
And that, I, I just don't think we're prepared to do this, and we have, we're on a tough schedule, and Frager is gonna pass it off to the Board.
And we have time to deal with that before January, right?
Well, it would have to be probably included in whatever ordinance the Board adopts, but that's up to their schedule.
And you would have to come up with secret findings along with those, along with that ordinance.
Well, whatever ordinance we adopt, we will need to go over all the mitigation measures, all the findings to correlate that with the EIR.
Okay, I'm for, go ahead.
Well, if I understand it correctly, we currently have a, a procedure whereby a caregiver is limited to two patients, is that right?
That's correct.
And 100 square feet per patient.
Correct.
Okay, getting away, away from the 100 square feet business, in the dispensary ordinance, we allow not more than six mature or 12 immature plants per qualified patient, just as sort of a guide here. That's where six shows up there. I'm a little reluctant just to sort of boot this to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I am too.
Saying, we can't figure anything out, you guys have to do it, so why don't we keep what we have in terms of the two patients, that's been there, they can change it if they want, and allow six plants? And that's the best we can do, and if they want to change it, they can change it.
But, but not the 100 square feet?
No.
So six plants, two patients.
Six each patient? Six plants each patient?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
What about indoors, outdoors?
Indoors.
I mean, this should be, able to be grown indoors.
Excuse me?
Indoors.
Mm-hmm. I think we could pass that on to the Board with a footnote saying, we don't know what we're talking about.
Well, we're going with what we already studied previously.
Yeah.
And we already have an analysis on that, correct? So if we're not changing it, we're just rese... Well...
We're, we're...
I mean, the law changed, the law changed in terms of canopy limits, the law, yeah, we can do it, we can do what you're, what you're proposing. You know, the, the caregivers are going to be limited by the new terms of Malcursa.
But how would those terms, would those terms be more limiting than what Commissioner...
It depends on what the prescription is for the, for the patient, but it's Health and, it's Health and Safety Code, Section 11362.1, that talks about the six plants.
Has there become an accepted scale of saying, so many square feet equals one plant of canopy?
No. No, but there's, there's, yeah, there's limits on grams and, there's, yeah, there's limits on the weight of the cannabis under the Health and Safety Code, but...
Maybe I wasn't clear. You know, we've been talking about canopy, and the state is talking about number of plants, and I was just wondering if we have a rule of thumb as far as number of square feet per plant, or...
I think it, the, the industry is changing because of the changing law, that what used to be very large plants, and that may still be the case for some growers, but may be going to smaller plants and multiple harvests.
An individual who's not growing for anybody else cannot also have more than six plants.
I understand that.
Okay.
So...
So under the urgency ordinance, and under the draft ordinance was analyzed in the EIR, a personal user or caregiver cultivator could grow in the same zones as commercial outdoor. They are also allowed to grow indoor in, pretty much in every other zone, with the exception of commercial. So you could have indoor cultivation in R1, at that point in time, up to 100 square feet. Now with six, six plants, I think it's more or less a wash, it's pretty much the same. And so what the concern I would have would be, is there any provision for caregiver or cultivation outdoors? And, you know, it could be the same zones that you have already identified, it could be different.
Well, it would make sense to permit it in the same zones we would permit commercial. In other words, if you can go outdoors commercial, why couldn't you go outdoors caregiver?
So does it make sense to just say caregivers? Caregivers have the same limitations as commercial growers? I mean, we're, we're gonna be eliminating a lot of caregivers here.
Well, I, I, it seems to me if a caregiver is growing indoors, that doesn't... Well, I, it seems to me if a caregiver is growing indoors, that doesn't implicate the same concerns as if they were growing outdoors.
Yes.
And so if we limit caregiver grows to be indoors, except they can grow outdoors in the same zones that commercial growers can operate, we should be okay.
But we, then, zones, I understand, you know, setbacks and parcel size and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Same?
Same.
For now?
Yes.
With a two-patient limit?
Yes.
A two what?
Two patients, six plants per patient.
Okay, that's, that's a provision.
I can, we can work with that.
You can do that?
Okay. Do I need to poll everybody, or are you good? Y'all good?
I thought there was consensus, so I think we're.
I didn't hear anything. I was just watching their heads go.
So caregiver cultivation is restricted to two patients, which would be six plants per patient. It would have the same standards for outdoor cultivation as commercial cultivation that we've just delivered or grown indoors.
Yep. I don't know how much sense that makes, but we don't have time to go through all the outdoors stuff.
And I just found the states, I found the exact state provision, so just so you know, under state law, a primary caregiver can possess a maximum of eight ounces dried cannabis per patient, plus maximum six mature or 12 immature cannabis plants per patient, in the absence of a physician's recommendation indicating that this quantity does not meet the patient's needs. So the default is six plants, but we can, and we can further limit what they're allowed.
Okay.
So we're okay with what you suggested.
Okay.
Okay, next item. We have alternative two, alternative four, and we need to make a recommendation to give it to the board of supervisors.
You mean, alternative two and this, and our alternative that we're talking?
Alternative four.
Well, I mean.
Modified.
Yeah, right, but it's.
I don't think this is alternative four. I think this is a separate alternative.
I don't either, but I thought you guys said that you didn't want the name changed.
No, 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 I was saying, we don't name it. We don't call it an alternative, we just say, this is an alternative recommendation of the board. And what I passed out earlier at the beginning of the meeting was a one-page sheet with some underlying text, which was a revised third page of the draft resolution that incorporates this recommendation.
This is yours?
And if you don't have that, if it's buried under other paper.
It's probably buried.
First thing this morning.
Well, that was first thing this morning, it's way past that.
I can share this.
So is it up there on the podium for everybody in the audience to see?
No.
Okay, then, we're gonna read it into the record.
Here, we got extra copies. You all have copies?
I got it.
Hey, Lisa.
Yes.
Do you send one of these down?
No.
There was one.
Yeah.
I can't find anything.
Did you send a text from the building about?
Notice?
No.
Yeah.
Good.
This is, I just want to bring this up. Just now that we have the alternative being as stricted as it is, with elements of fairness in it built within, I just want to, once again, ask the commission whether they want this to be the first choice and the ban ordinance to be the second choice. I think that's, since it's very different than what we were looking at yesterday, which is.
No, the ban's the first. You were instructed for the ban, the ban's the first.
No, well, we're not, I mean, that, that's fully within your capabilities, but we're not, we're not instructed.
You're correct.
To do the ban, okay.
So, ban is first, just one second. This is alternative.
I agree.
And I don't agree. I think the, the alternative would be the first choice, and the ban would be the alternative.
And I agree with Commissioner Pacelli.
Lovely. And I completely disagree with both of them, all of them. I think that they should both go forward equally, and the supervisors need to look at both and make a decision. We don't get to make decisions here, we're only making a recommendation, and they need to look at both of them and make a final decision.
I could live with that.
I can live with that.
So I'm not, I'm not telling them to choose one over the other, I think that they need to step up to the plate, they're our representatives, they make the final decision, and they need to make the choice. We've done our job.
All that great drafting that Peter did overnight has to be redone.
Okay, so.
We have three, two.
Go equally for them to both, to look at both policies and see what they think is best. We know that they want a ban, and they'll most likely pick that, but that's for them to decide.
Do you want to give us five minutes to try to line edit our resolution? So that you can vote on that?
The ordinance that we're going to be voting on to send it up to the supervisors.
Well, the revised resolution.
Yes, please.
So first of all, you can disregard the additional paper that we just passed out. That's off the table.
Okay.
So, and this is based on a apparent majority of three commissioners who would like to forward both alternatives as equal alternatives. So, therefore resolve, all of the whereas's remain the same, we go down to the findings, and the first change would be in, under number two, the two versions of the proposed zoning ordinance are consistent with the county's general plan. And then under the evidence, one, two, three, four, five, starting the sentence in the sixth line down, "by banning or regulating commercial cannabis cultivation and commercial uses pursuant to either version of the proposed ordinance." Does this make sense now? Nope, I'm sorry, pursuant to either version, the proposed ordinance will protect water.
I just, I just caught up with you on the paper.
So what, where are we at? What? Line six of evidence finding in the number two. Page two of the resolution, it was in the planning commission packet.
Okay.
By banning or regulating commercial cannabis cultivation and commercial uses pursuant to either version, the proposed ordinance will protect water, biological, and cultural resources, et cetera, et cetera. So we're adding or regulating pursuant to either version to that sentence. In finding number three, it would read, "based on the findings prepared in section three of both versions of the proposed ordinance, neither the proposed, neither of the proposed ordinances would be detrimental to the public health, public interest, health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of the county, and are consistent with state law." The evidence would be, regardless of which version is chosen, the proposed changes to chapter 1795 strengthen regulatory standards for cannabis land uses by banning or more strictly regulating all commercial uses, and that the rest stays the same. Under finding number four, the proposed amendments of both versions are internally consistent with other applicable provisions of Title 17, and the evidence first line would read, "the ordinance amendments have been or will be prepared by county planning staff and county council to ensure internal consistency." Those would be the recommended changes to support that suggested action.
Could you, I always am in awe of your ability to write on your feet. I really have a problem saying that the ban ordinance is good for the county. I mean, I voted for the, for the EIR, but I think, I mean, my own personal feeling is that the, with a ban ordinance, the illegal grows would get out of control, and the county would suffer environmentally, economically, and emotionally.
Under the DEIR, it says it's the superior option.
That's the DEIR that's based on a compliance, assumption that there is compliance. We're now in the real world, where the rubber meets the road, meets the road, and.
I'm not taking that out.
That, no, I don't, but I think, I, I can't vote for it the way it is, saying both, both, both. If we could do one at a time, I can vote against the ban and for the other myself, you know, as far as the evidence goes.
Okay, so hold on, we just polled this commission.
I'm fully in favor.
And we were sending both recommendations up together.
I'm fully in favor of that.
Then why would we vote on them separately? Because now what you're doing is, I could go back to Commissioner Wooster and Sisk, and they said ban first, then I come to you two, and you said the alternative first, and I said, let's go with them together and have the supervisors read both. Let's make the supervisors read both before they make a final decision.
I want that to happen.
Then why were you taking it out?
What I am having a problem with is, I can't agree that it's good for the county to enact a ban that is gonna result, in my opinion.
Okay.
In damage to the county.
Okay.
So if we could somehow vote for both versions going to the board, but separately, we can either separately vote, or whatever, so I don't have to say something that I deeply disagree with, is my belief.
Okay.
So, and I could vote against that, and vote for the other, and vote in favor of putting both before the board equal.
Do you want to alter it and separate it out and vote that way? One no. I'm two noes. Commissioner Wooster.
Perhaps a way to resolve the conflict that Mr. Lattish has is a motion to recommend the ban alternative be made, and it might fail on a two-three vote, it might pass on its own, and then an alternative vote, so you would have the ability to vote no against the ban. And then, the problem is, you're gonna have to have a majority of the commission approve a resolution. And you, you know, it sounds like it's gonna be two votes for part of the resolution, two votes for another part of the resolution, and it's, we can't move forward that way.
Okay, I.
Well, I'll change my vote.
I don't know, I'll.
I'll change my vote, I will go.
I'm, I'm back to, I am stating on the record that I want both going up, and the board to make their choice, and I am voting accordingly, and I just don't agree with the result under the ban.
Okay, so we can bifurcate these separately, we can vote on sending the ban to the supervisors and sending the other, and I agree with Peter, then you have the option to say, no, you don't want to send the ban.
And we can put Commissioner Lattish's contingency into the record on the minutes.
That's fine, and then, then I'll, I'll vote for sending them both up.
Okay, so are we gonna vote separately?
I think at this point in time, by placing the expressed concerns of Mr. Lattish in the record, that it satisfies the concern, and I would suggest that a motion be made to adopt the resolution as amended.
We have done that before.
Yes.
I remember myself being the abstaining person.
Correct.
Just so that's on the record, then I felt better.
Correct. I'm okay with that.
All right.
Okay, so can somebody make a motion to approve of the amended resolution that he just read?
I will make that motion as amended.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, three, two.
I don't think I just know here are cheers. Should we take a couple minutes break so we can reorganize and get going on the dispensary ordinance?
Okay, so, yes, but I think we need to make a decision, how much we want to go into the ordinance on the dispensary, and how much time we have, how long everybody wants to stay here, because basically, right now, if we were to leave here at five, the most we're gonna get done is reading staff's report into the record, and then to go to public comment, it's gonna be five.
I think the staff report will not take too much time.
Okay.
And maybe we can have a show of hands of who wishes to speak regarding, speak for public comment on the dispensary ordinance.
Okay.
Because I think that.
Is there some reason why after seven hours of listening to all this, there hasn't been any public comment of what you guys have given us? You realize how much information you've given us with no remark, any vote, and you never heard from the public?
Okay.
If that's your procedure, why do you just?
Okay, I'm in it, I'm in it.
We're waiting, and we're tired of waiting, tell us about the waiting.
Okay. So, just one second, please. I hear what you guys are all saying, I've heard it from both sides, not just one, so everybody has had the same opinion, and when we talked about this, the, the ruling was that we did the public comment.
This was agendized for the discussion on everything that this draft 1795 encompassed, as well as the EIR, that agenda item was continued after public comment yesterday to today, so under the Brown Act, no additional public comment on this item is required.
But now, if we open the dispensary thing, public comment is once again open as to the dispensary.
As to the dispensary, correct.
But that doesn't give them the opportunity to speak on the work that we did here today.
That's where we did dispensary.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
I think we should get into the public comment and go to six o'clock if we need to, because these people have been here all day, and, you know, they may not be available the next time we get together.
Okay, but I don't know if you're understanding, they don't want to speak public comment to the dispensary, they want to speak public comment on what we just addressed and voted on.
I'm sure there are some people here that want to speak us to the dispensary, and that's what I'm.
You're referencing public comment to dispensary, it's not what we just voted on.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so procedurally, whenever we started this, I did announce that we were gonna do public comment first, and then we were gonna deliberate and vote, and I did state that we were not the final decision here, that the recommendation would go to the board of supervisors, and that you would get your second shot at this, speaking at the board of supervisors on whatever we determined here. So I don't think that we stepped out of our position on how that was gonna be handled. I stated it more than once, that that's the way that we were gonna process this. And now what we were going to do, according to following the agenda, was open 17.91, discuss the dispensary, have staff do a presentation, it was gonna, again, be the same thing, public was going to be able to speak on the agenda item of dispensaries, and then we would be doing our deliberation and sending it to the supervisors. So that's kind of where we're at, I don't feel like that I wasn't honest up front and told you what the agenda was gonna look like, how the process was gonna go. We went over the procedures in the planning department, and if you read the procedures, we did exactly what the procedure said that we adopted and followed those. I'm not sure that anything, so I guess where we're at now is we're going to go to 17.91 and read, have staff open and continue, but you wanted to see how much public comment there would be on dispensary.
Well, just, just to get an idea of how much time, if we could get through all public comment by six o'clock, maybe we can, I don't know.
Okay.
It's really up to you.
Okay. Can I get a show of hands of who would be speaking on 17.91 regarding dispensaries? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
If this is the only subject now?
Yes.
This is it?
Okay, okay.
Okay, that's great, let's do it. Okay, that's great, let's do it.
I can't hear you.
Oh, they are?
I just-
Okay, well, then, let's just go ahead and get started on the staff report, and then start letting the public come to the mic.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have to leave at five, so if I, if you're still going, it's, it's not rudeness, or I just have another item.
Okay. So, the agenda was to go to nine to, nine to five, I think it's important that you be here for this. I mean, if you leave, then you're gonna miss the public comment portion of this, and how do you make a decision without being present for public comment? I think it's fair that we advertise nine to five, so we're gonna go nine to five? Okay. And then we're gonna have to agendize this for Monday morning? Or Tuesday, do we know? We're gonna go to Tuesday?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I mean, Monday was what we were told, and, why, why not Monday?
Because the planning director has a commitment at noon on Monday that he cannot miss.
Okay, I'll change my plans for Tuesday. Everybody else is okay?
Unless you guys think we can get done by noon.
I think we should start now and try to get done by noon, Monday.
Okay.
I may well not be here Tuesday.
Well, we can, we can start earlier on Monday, is that-
We can do that.
I mean, seven thirty?
Oh, no.
Yes.
Oh, get this done.
Let's get started and see how far we get.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Peter, would you like to go ahead and discuss the staff report on this?
Before we get started.
I always said, um, I don't, it's a language that you-
Okay, thank you, um, well, I just passed out, we're, um, an additional edit that needed to be added to the proposed ordinance. You'd all already received an email from me dated September 21st with some revised language regarding the, um, background check process. Also, I received an email that was addressed to the planning commission, uh, but was only sent to me, uh, this came in the other day, and just due to all the rushing around, I didn't get a chance to open up my email until lunch today, so, um, I just copied that for you, do you have that? So, this is a revision to the, um, existing cannabis ordinance, uh, cannabis dispensary ordinance was first adopted in 2005, um, and, um, this is essentially to bring it into compliance with Malkursa. County Council spent a great deal of time, uh, going over the provisions of state law, comparing that with the policy directives of the existing ordinance, bringing the language inconsistent with the provisions of state law without changing what is presently allowed. So, it looks like it's completely different, essentially it's the same. We've a lot of changes to definitions, there is, because of the nuances of state law and the, and the ability to cultivate cannabis within a dispensary under our current provisions, but the requirements to do that are quite different under state law, it looks as if there are significant changes and increases in, um, what could happen in dispensary. Um, our intent, and we believe we have done that, is to keep it the same, other than to bring it in compliance with state law. So, um, I, I don't know, oh, how much value there is to go through all of the provisions of it, um, I suppose it probably is quite a bit discussion of that after we get into, um, the deliberation, but, um, some of the things that have changed, we've, you know, we've added quite a few definitions, uh, provisions on applicability and interpretation, um, and, um, and the enforcement provisions to ensure that it's, you know, consistent with our existing codes and state law, but, again, the, the basic tenants of the ordinance are more or less the same of what's, what's allowed today under the dispensary code titled 1791. The changes we're suggesting is, uh, one of the provisions in 1791-050D, which was the background check process, um, the state, we, we could allow the state to, um, do the background check for us, the sheriff said no, they wanted to do the background check, so we took language that, uh, had been prepared previously in coordination with the sheriff, and that would be, would be inserted for 050D. There was also a provision-
Excuse me, is that, I, I just don't find that piece of paper right now, is that something-
This was sent via email, I, I'll pass it out, I don't have-
I have it.
Thank you.
You can have mine. That's the original.
You're accommodating, thank you very much.
Okay, now I'll let you have that one. So, in addition to that, um, 1791-040G, we would like to add to that, and that's the handout that I just passed out, um, that says additional draft of dispensary ordinance. And that's just to clarify that we don't consider cannabis cultivation ag operation. This is language basically taken from the urgency ordinance to ensure that it's not confused and that, you know, it's clear that there's separation between those types of uses.
These are just things that we left out or forgot when we were doing the ordinance. There's one more single line edit that I wanna propose, 1791-040F, as in Frank.
Just a sec. 040... Ah, okay, let's see, 040, yes.
The, in the, the first line, the word premises should be substituted for parcel.
And Peter, by the way, I found, I had cut and pasted this in-
Oh, okay.
-to my copy, so, do you need this back?
That'd be good, just so I have it. So, I guess, you know, the bottom line here is, you know, I think there's some disagreement as to what the board direction was regarding dispensaries, um, which is our interpretation, our understanding, but the board direction was that the dispensary ordinance essentially remained the same, I think that will be the basis of the debate. Uh, we could also consider changes to the ordinance by limiting it in some different way, uh, there could be, um, uh, you know, put a cap on the total numbers, it could be distributed by geographic region, there's any number of ways that other jurisdictions have regulated dispensaries, we could do the same, um, but, again, the, the basis of this ordinance draft is to keep the provisions of the existing code the same, just bring it into compliance with state law.
And I think, I just wanted to add a couple of things about the type 12 micro-business license, under Malkursa, ve- very small operations, they have an exception, usually, as I've said before, you can't have multiple types of licensed activities on the same premises. There is a type 12 micro-business license that allows four different activities under a single license, however, chapter 1791 only allows the sale, the sales and the cultivation. And so, when I, because I was trying to mirror existing policy in 1791, I drafted it that even if somebody has a micro-business license, which is what precisely they would need to have if they were going to grow and sell on the same premises, they still would not be allowed to do the manufacturing, um, and what was the other?
Test.
Test, no, it wasn't test, there was another, there was another, um, let me, and, let's see, and the distribu- yeah, distribution, which is the wholesale distribution.
You kept it to the scope of the current.
So, I kept it, so, um, just, you know, that's, so, when you see discussion of type 12 license, you're, that's what we're talking about, is the micro-business license, so.
Can the micro-business license be included in with the dispensary medicinal license?
So, a, a micro-business license, just like all other state licenses, have to specifically state whether they're for medical or for adult use, and we, we can say you can, you have to operate medical only, we could say you can, you can have an M-type and an A-type. Um, so, I, because it was medical cannabis in 1791, the limitations on people with a micro-business license as written right now is it would have to be medical, and they could not, they could only do two of the four activities that they would be allowed to do under a state micro-business license.
And, and that's consistent with the current-
That's to be consistent with the current chapter.
Thank you, you've done a job here.
Okay, are there any other questions from the commissioners for staff?
No.
Okay, then we are going to now open this up to public comment.
Good afternoon, Bill McManus, uh, what you're faced with right now is really four possibilities with 1791 or dispensaries. Uh, possibility number one is to, uh, disallow any dispensary, retail, or micro-business by license type and rescind 1791. You don't ban dispensaries, you just express your desire not to issue licenses for those activities. So, you would be saying, we're not gonna do a 10, type 10 license or a 10A, which is a cultivating dispensary, type 12 micro-business, which, in addition to what county council has told you, is also described as a business that occupies less than 10,000 square feet and produces less than $2 million in revenue. Now, a micro-business like that in Los Angeles would be a micro-business. A micro-business like that in Calaveras County would be a very large business, so, that, it's a little bit deceiving. The second, uh, choice you have is to restrict dispensaries to storefronts only, no cultivation, which means that they would have to buy their marijuana from a testing facility or a distribution facility, sell tested marijuana, and you could ensure that the product was safe, but they can't grow their own, you could do that. The third alternative or choice you might have is to allow dispensaries with restricted cultivation, which means that maybe they have to grow all of their marijuana within the facility of the storefront, wherever they're at, and that's controlled by zoning, which is CP, but everything has to be grown onsite, indoors. And the fourth thing you can do, which seems to be the easiest thing for Calaveras County to do lately, is do nothing and allow the state to come in and take charge, and they will. All those license types will be administered by the BCC, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and they will tell you what you can do. Um, as far as some of the, the changes that you said were made to 1791, uh, there were a few that were a little bit, uh, more disturbing, of course, you restate that ADA is a requirement for any dispensary building, uh, right now, we have a dispensary that's been in business for five or six years, that has been ADA, out of ADA compliance since the day it opened. Uh, I have personally filed code compliance complaints and nothing has happened, it is in the old 1791 that it must be ADA compliant, it's in the new one, but, again, we see that there is no enforcement, therefore, regulations are worthless. Regulations without enforcement creates chaos. That's what we have now, based on the urgency ordinance, is chaos, we've had it for two years, tons of regulations, zero enforcement. As we move on, some of the other goodies in 1795 that I found particularly disturbing, uh, you'll, you'll note that all the way back from Senate Bill 420, moving forward, there's, uh, legacy language that has moved forward, and that's when you're talking about the number of plants, uh, that a dispensary, the number of ounces a dispensary can sell or have for each patient, uh, it's listed like at, uh, six plants or 12 plants, whatever the case may be. The dispensary can also be restricted to say you can only buy a half a pound of marijuana a day, that's 263 grams, that's about 300 joints, um, you probably won't have to make too many trips to the dispensary buying marijuana when you're getting volumes like that. However, as in 420 and in 1791, which was option K in that area, those limits apply-
You have about a minute left, just a minute left, I just want to get my heads out.
Okay, God, jeez, um, those, those, uh, quantities apply, except if a doctor says the patient needs more, and at that point, there is no limit, and the dispensary can go. You look confused, Lisa, read it, it's in there, and it's in, the other one that disturbs me is, uh, the background checks for dispensaries and their employees, uh, don't feel that it's, uh, that the planning director should be able to override the decision of the sheriff's department, they're the ones who make decisions on felons and how dangerous they are, also, that the dispensary should never be allowed under an administrative use permit, because if any citizen wants to challenge it, they have to pay the $500 fee and bring it to you, and it should be going to a board first for review, and it should require a conditional use permit, and the citizens can attend, however it turns out, it turns out, but at least the citizens get a shot to, uh, talk about dispensaries which are neighborhood nuisances. And yesterday, you got a letter from the sheriff's department, and I gave you a copy of it, where they said that they outlined the crime that occurs around dispensaries, and they don't, they don't like them.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Now that your, your time is up for you to talk by yourself.
Go ahead, go ahead and ask me the question.
No.
I'm not going anywhere.
No, I know, but this gives you a chance to clarify, um, I, I, before you got to the background checks, do you wanna give the specific section numbers within this document that, that you were referring to?
Which document are you, are you referring to? To 1791?
The 1791 as part of the-
The new one, okay.
Yeah, the new one.
Um, for the ADA, that would be 17 dot 91 dot 070, paragraph T.
A sec.
Uh, the multiple dispensaries under Prop 64.
Right now, you're not under a time limit, let me catch up with you.
Tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, 070...
Good.
What, what subsection?
I'm sorry, what?
He wants to know what number.
1791 point 070, and then-
T.
T, thank you, okay, great. And, any others that you want to specifically-
You wanted another citation? Let's go with the multiple dispensaries?
Uh-huh.
That would be, uh, that's the Prop 64 thing, that would be 1791-20, uh, G, is it G? Oh, Prop 64, multiple dispensaries. Here's my, no, I'm too tired.
I'm sorry, what are you, what are you having him look for here?
He, he referred to certain problems, and it's gonna be a lot easier for us to-
Okay, and then on the dispensary grows-
To see where they are.
That was 1791 dot 050, or, uh, 040F, which describes all the different types of cultivation licenses that can be had. There's a new one in there, it's type 5, we didn't have that before under 266, or, or 1791 when it first came up, that's, that seems to be new. Uh, okay, and then we have the planning department, uh, overriding the sheriff, and that would be 1791 dot 050D, which talks about applicants for-
Yeah, I've got that, I've got that.
Oh, okay, well, hey, you're way ahead of me.
Thank you.
Maybe I should be asking you.
Yeah.
Uh, the ADA requirement, uh, is, uh, I think, I think it's still in 50, and we keep going on, and there's all sorts of them in there.
No, I just, I just, and you know, I, I-
Did I, did I miss anything, that, was I able to give you everything you needed?
I think so, I think-
Okay.
Your, your talk was very well organized, I just needed to see what it looked.
Okay, are we complete?
No.
I'm pleased.
I have a question, too.
Oh, sure, Lisa.
Unless you wanna sit down, because we've got you too tired.
I'm sorry?
You wanna sit down, 'cause we made you too tired? I'm tired, too, I get it.
I resent that.
I'm totally, don't resent that, I'm serious.
I also, I, like Adlie Stevenson once said, "I will stay here until hell freezes over."
There we go. Okay. That wasn't meant as a negative. It was serious. I mean, we're all tired. I agree with you.
You've got to slow down a little bit.
Okay. Um, you were, we were talking about, um, oh, the AUP versus CUP?
Yes.
And, and when you were speaking to that, the definition and the reason that you wanted to do that, and I just wanted a little bit of clarity on that, is because if it's a CUP, then you can file an appeal for them to renew their license?
Well, no. What we're hoping for is with a, a conditional use permit, it won't be left up to one person, a bureaucrat in the county deciding whether a pot shop opens. It needs to come to the planning commission for a hearing where citizens can be notified. They can come in and express their opinion about that pot shop, and then you guys are free to do whatever you want after that. But at least they get a shot at it. Right now, there, it's an administrative use permit. There's, there's really no notification unless you call and find out when it's going to be renewed or issued. It's kind of hard to figure out when it's going to be. Now, you have to pay $500 if you want to appeal that. If the planning commissioner says, yes, we're going to open a pot shop in Douglas Flat, which is coming up, and people in Douglas Flat say, we really don't want to do that, we, they have to come up $500 to get it in front of you guys, just like the pot appeals, the license denials, things like that. So we feel that, that extra layer of public scrutiny and availability to the public to discuss this before it lands on them like a ton of bricks is probably the better way to go. I mean, you don't have to do what the citizens want, but at least you can, you can hear them.
Okay.
It's no big deal.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your clarity.
Are we complete?
I am complete, except for yesterday, and I was asked for, and probably, I'll do that during a later moment, but the letter that you held up yesterday from Captain Macedo from July 2017?
Yes.
In talking to him yesterday, he said that that letter was not an intent to shut down every dispensary. It was specifically to the Douglas Flat dispensary that you just spoke to.
Right.
And the way that it came out was every dispensary. But he wanted to make sure that if he's going to be quoted, that it was specific to Douglas Flat.
Right.
And that is coming up, I understand.
The, the point of it is that comments have been made before that, that there was no problems with dispensaries.
Okay.
And Captain Macedo was relating that there are problems with dispensaries.
And that's why I requested the sheriff come and give us the compliance.
And so we wanted to at least say that, let's not gloss this over. Let's be honest with the people. You know, there are problems at dispensaries, and Captain Macedo directed some attention towards that, whether it was one dispensary or not. There's only three dispensaries right now. So obviously, they're having problems somewhere, you know.
Okay. I thank you. And thank you for the clarity. Does anybody else have any further questions? Are we good here?
I'm good.
Good? Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
My name's Mike Gonsman. I'm from Wallace. And that's a pretty hard act to follow, but I don't really have nearly that much information. I just want to let you, commissioner folks, know that I am totally against all the dispensaries, as I am commercial cultivation. I think it all needs to be banned. I think with the new state laws that we have right now on medical and recreational, we're going to find that we have a ton of availability in this county, more than, more than most people can imagine. And I just don't understand why with the laws that we have today, we need a business selling marijuana, and then also with the other things that can come from that, we can't, because regulation, folks, it all comes down to regulation and compliance and regulation. And there's no way, regardless of whether we continue with the, all the, the grows that we have now, or we cut them down to half of what we have, whatever, the taxes that we get from that is just never, ever, ever going to cover the cost of regulation. It's just not going to do it. Today, folks, you guys talked about regulating and adding this and, and doing that. And we, we leave this property because it's in the wrong zone. We go to another property. Now, they have so much time to clean up their property. Somebody's got to watch that and monitor that to make sure that's done accurately, on time, all these different things. It just adds up to a lot. I mean, I don't know how many employees, staff you have now, but I can guarantee you, it's going to be many, many, many times more. And in the end, at the, at the end of the day, the cost of those people and what they do and their, and their jobs itself is going to exceed any revenue that you get from the growers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Deana Morris, Calaveras County. I agree with Mr. McManus that an alternative should be submitted to the board for the dispensaries to be rescinded by not renewing the permits. But if that's not possible to give that as an alternative to the board, then I'd at least like to see that dispensaries will not be allowed to do cultivating, whether it's medical or recreational, no cultivation at all, and no micro businesses, no type 12 cultivation licenses. And I would also say to limit dispensaries to the three existing ones, no more. And those need to operate as medical only. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Glad to see you. I'm not tired. I hope you aren't either. Okay. I passed out a, to each one of you, a executive brief for planning commission for dispensaries. You should have it. First of all, I want to thank Peter Maurer and Julie Moss Lewis for their additions to the draft dispensary. Thank you very much. I have a little bit of a different idea on this. I'm probably not going to touch too much on yesterday. I'm going to take on today. So, added businesses. No, manufacturing doesn't belong here, anywhere, anyhow, anywho, nowhere, no how. I've seen too much in my visits of people saying they're doing it right, using CO2, and there is that loophole in Prop 64 where you can use butane. It doesn't matter to me what they promise. There is that loophole, and you need to know it's there, that it can be used in specific instances. Manufacturing does not belong in our county, in my opinion. I have visited manufacturing labs or three to see how it's done and what it's done. Micro businesses, that's, that's a toughie, too. Here's what I would suggest. Do you want me to go through these, or do you prefer I not go through them and just-
You've got about four, three and a half minutes left, so.
Okay, I'll touch on the highlights. Here's what I think would be, might be beneficial. I came to the idea after much research and soul searching that a ban is the way to go. And here's why. You can have regulation. You can promise to fund all you want, and the taxes and the fees, we can never catch up. It will never pay for the environmental mitigation, which is really called, we're going to try to fix it, and remediation, which means we hope to fix it in many years.
Okay. You're speaking to the dispensaries, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So it's both of those. So, we, that I come to this. That's what transferred me over to this. I would like to see three, maximum of five, only in CP zones dispensaries. I would like them to be able to, and I've given you the quote here. I talked to the state of California two days ago that manages this. State of California Revenue and Tax Code Division Two, Part 14.5, Cannabis Tax, Section 3409, Subsection F3C. And you can capture the Prop 64 funds if we allow our dispensaries, and I would suggest interior contiguous. That doesn't mean adding containers or tough sheds to the back. That means contiguous dispensaries, allow them to commercial grow 201 square feet or more within their contiguous facility. We get all Prop 64 funds to which we are entitled. So, I would like to consider that. I've given you seventeen point nine five point two oh oh, and that's either for your insomnia or your enjoyment to read, but it's a purpose and intent that it, that just gives you an idea of how that can be structured. But it's legal. We're entitled to it, and it's possible. And that's all I have to say, and I really appreciate this time you've given me. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Stewart, District Two. Mr. Maurer, just, just a few minutes ago said that he would be looking into other jurisdictions that might have some bearing on how to rewrite this. And just yesterday, or today's the 28th, Sacramento did a surprise site visit on their dispensaries, and it was recorded at Casey R3, and what happened. The, on their surprise inspections for compliance to a variety of different things, none of the places that they went to were in complete compliance. Most of them have these little asterisks that says they were denied access even to check that particular thing. So, from all the discussion we've always had is that, is there going to be a way to regulate? Can we regulate these people in this, this industry? And obviously, even in other large jurisdictions that have lots of enforcement availability, they still can't. So I'm, I'm still just saying one more time, just ban. Thanks.
Aurora Weatherby, District Five, Valley Springs. I would have sure liked to have had the one page to this. I've only got the kind of little last edition thing here, so I'm not too sure what the front part of it was. I've done some research here. I've gone through the Department of Justice. I've gone through the DEA in Washington DC, as I stated yesterday. I've also been in contact with a group called CALM, which is Citizens Against Legalizing Marijuana. This, and, you know, their email address is calmca.org. All the information on the pamphlet and in talking to them has been vetted, so it's true and it's factual. And to me, marijuana is no joke. I want to tell you, I mentioned the children yesterday, and our kids are getting this. This is not good for them, not good for adults, really, either. Fetal risks include lower birth weight, maybe addiction in later life, birth defects and cancers, problems, solvings, and learning difficulties later in life. And they can also show genetic changes. Marijuana's effects on the brains, I read this in a study done from London, England. It causes and exacerbates addiction, depression, psychosis, schizophrenia, psychotic breaks, violent acts, anxiety, loss of memory, perception problems, motor skills, and evil, in some cases, mental degeneration. It also affects the frontal lobe where teenagers who get this, it destroys gray matter and also gives them their lack of ability to determine consequences of their behaviors. And their brains are not fully developed until they reach the age of 24 or 25. Teen users, one in six who try marijuana, can later become addicted. There's a seven-time increase in suicidal ideations. And marijuana's big goal is all about money, and teenagers' users today become lifetime consumers tomorrow. Drug driving, this comes from Colorado. One in every eight traffic fatalities in this Colorado has increased 32% since their inception and voting to legalize marijuana. I understand in looking at some information from Colorado that not all counties in Colorado have approved medicinal marijuana and/or commercial grows, that there's many counties in Colorado that do not allow it. From what I've read on some of their, on their website, they many times now and over are sorry they approved this to begin with. Today's pot is 10 to 40 times stronger than it was 40 years ago. So the marijuana that people used in the 60s is now 40 times more potent. Butane hash oil, it increases the potency of the THC by 90%. And it causes fires and explosions, and it's usually cooked in neighborhoods and that kind of thing.
You have about a-
Several months back-
About a minute left.
My time up?
No, minute.
Okay. They found cooking containers and butane containers for making hash oil right here on our Calaveras High School grounds that were dumped. Marijuana is big money. You can get anywheres from $2,000 to $4,000 per plant. I talked to a grower from West Point the first Saturday in October 2016. He says he grows, he uses three pounds for personal use per, per year, and that if anybody needs any more than three pounds, they're selling the rest. He said he gets, based on the type of plant he has and the known THC content of those plants, that he can get anywheres from $2,000 to $6,000 per plant, depending on the THC content. And that's all cash under the table. So getting the dispensaries gone would help protect our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't look like it, but I have a little bit of Indian blood. And one of the things that I've understood is that when someone else is not being on that, putting up with you and telling you the absolute truth, that the person speaks with a forked tongue. And I've had a little bit of that feeling from this whole experience of the last two days. And I'm very sorry about it. I think you're all decent people, and you all mean well, but I am very, very saddened about the direction that you have chosen to take. I believe that things are being set up to the advantage of people that stand a profit from marijuana growing and manufacturing and distributing in the whole nine yards. And I believe that those people are in the background with money, and eventually, a lot of the people that are growing marijuana here and as a long-term deal, that they will not, um, that those people will not benefit eventually from it. They may make a one-time sale to someone. And even though you guys seem to have tried to put safe holds in your document, I believe that there are loopholes. One of the loopholes is when you made the change-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you for just a minute, because it really seems like we've gotten off track. We're talking about dispensaries now?
Yes, I am talking about dispensaries.
Okay.
And one of the changes that you made was 17.91.040F, changing parcel for premises. And the premises involves a parcel using more than one part of it for more than one grow. And I, I don't think that that's what we were hearing in the last two days, but that's how it's ended up. I don't agree with that. And I feel hornswoggled. As far as the, you know, more about the dispensaries, they, um, they're just a back door for people to make money off of a drug that causes a lot of trouble for a lot of people, including every one of us in this room. And if, if it ends up that people are going to grow it and, and start, you know, continue their business or whatever, I, I can't have anything to say about that. But I can say this- but I can say this, that I don't think it's right for some big shot Wall Street person to come in and take advantage of people that are here, whether they're growing marijuana or they're not growing marijuana. And I'm very disappointed in this whole charade. People have said things that have led us to believe that you were going one direction, but in the end, you didn't go that direction. You have compromised us completely.
Okay. I just have to ask that we try and stay on topic of the dispensaries, because the last couple of speakers have been completely off-topic, and it's, I'm getting a lot of point-of-order signs on the other side of the room, so if we could just be respectful and try and stay on topic with the dispensaries, I'd appreciate it. I understand that all of this kind of ties into it, the growing and the dispensaries are kind of tied in, so I've been letting the conversation go, waiting for it to tie in, and it's not getting there, so.
Can I say something, Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Just we're doing that, and I know it's not right, I know what you asked for, and you're right. But that's because we have so much information in such a long period of time, we've rolled out this, and it's hard to make a final judgment, just for a minute.
I understand, thank you. Would you like to go now, please? Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Bill Wilson, District 1. I'm 67 years old. For most of my life, marijuana's been illegal. Why? First, because of Harry Ansley, then because of Richard Nixon. In the last 20 years, we've had medical marijuana in the state of California, under Prop 215 and then SB 420. Until two years ago, we then had MRSA, now we passed ALMA, now something that's been illegal my whole life that I used when I was a teenager, so obviously, I'm brain dead, has now become legal in the state of California. Thank God. Dispensaries are the retail option. They were put through hoops, just like the growers have been put through hoops. They have created legitimate businesses that, under the regulations, had to be nonprofit. I know people that work for nonprofit corporations that make upwards of $500,000 a year in salary, but the corporation's nonprofit. The dispensaries we've had in this county service not just our county and not just our population. They service Amador County, who has not allowed them. They service Tuolumne County, which has allowed them and then restricted them. Our dispensaries, as the sheriff said yesterday, have had some issues. How many issues do we have at liquor stores, bars, festivals where alcohol and wine is served? How many drunk driving arrests have we had? The dispensaries offer and provide a service to this community and to the surrounding communities. They've tried to be law-abiding, they've tried to follow the rules that have been set before them. Have they? I don't know, that's up to the county, right? And the people who do the inspections, and the people who go out and see that those rules and regulations are followed, just like anybody that's doing a commercial grow. Sorry for the sidestep, but rules and regulations are what govern us. Some people in this room want a complete ban, not just of marijuana growing, personal growing, any type of growing. People who claim that marijuana has no medical value don't know their history, because it's been used for 10,000 years throughout the world, until 1937, when it was outlawed in this country. We didn't even know what THC was until an Israeli doctor in 1964 discovered it. So, the inconsistencies that were expressed by the AMA in 1937, because they didn't know what the compound was that was in there that made it work, they just knew it worked, worked for seizures, it worked for Alzheimer's, it worked for Parkinson's, it worked for all kinds of different rim uses. And most doctors before 1937 carried it in their bag. Nobody looked the other way. Of course, they also carried a lot of men in their bags with opium, and hey, that's okay! It's not a Class 1 drug, right? We can all take that. You can go down to your local pharmacy, if your doctor prescribes it, get Percodan, Percocet, Oxycontin, morphine. I know my father-in-law died on morphine, that's how you die, you know that, right? You get morphine, and they just keep giving it to you and starving you to death when you have cancer. That's the end result. I hope none of us go that way, it's not pretty, and it's not fun. But again, these dispensaries, I feel, have been good stewards, have provided a good service to the community. They're not having wild parties, they're not allowing people to consume on-premise. That's one of the biggest problems, as I see it. You can't even go in there, you have to go in there and look at the medication and say, "Yeah, I'll give you $40 for that gram", and then walk out the door.
Thank you. Is there going to be any other public speakers? Okay, then we will close the public comments and bring it back to the Commission for Deliberations. It is 5 o'clock. Commissioner Bocelli?
Let's talk about when we're getting together, Monday morning.
Well, what else do we have to do? Deliberate and vote.
We have to deliberate on this and vote. We can stay until 6 and work on it, or we can meet back again on Monday, it's up to you all.
Let's try a half an hour.
I'm not saying we can't stay.
Oh, we can't stay, so we're going to be meeting Monday morning at?
8:30?
9:00.
So far, I've been an optimist, though, we're going to get done, we're going to get done, and I thought we were going to get done today. So, I want to make sure we're done by noon on Monday.
I agree with Mr. Laddish, because I can't come back Tuesday.
I'm sorry?
I cannot come back Tuesday.
On Tuesday, you can't come, what'd you say?
I'm out Tuesday.
You cannot come back on Tuesday.
Yeah, right.
Which is your good ear.
So, yeah. What time would you suggest we get together on Monday?
What time, ask Peter and Annette what time we can do this on Monday.
And we don't necessarily?
Can you guys be there at 8:30?
We'll be there anytime you decide it's appropriate.
Okay.
Can we start at 8?
But announcements can be at the Board Chambers.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Can we start at 8?
We can, if Commissioner Bocelli can be there.
Because that'll make us 8 to 12, that gives us four hours.
It's good with me. Pressure, pressure.
8's acceptable to me.
Okay, so we are going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to continue the meeting. Unfortunately, we'd love to stay, but there's another group of people taking over the room, so we can't.
They'd love it.
I'm sorry about that, but we're going to adjourn. We are going to meet at 8:00 AM Monday morning on October 1st at the Board Chambers to finish deliberations.
Well, it's Monday, it's coming Monday, whatever.
Isn't October 1st Monday? Help me, it's the 2nd.
Yeah, 2nd.
I need to look at my calendar, thank you, Esther. We're going to look it up.
October 2nd, Monday, October 2nd.
Okay, October 2nd, 8:00 AM, Board Chambers.
We're all in agreement, it's the 2nd.
Thank you, thank you very much for catching that. Okay.